Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the role to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Gara, Councilmember Schneer, and Mayor Steinberg.
Here. I know Councilmember Jennings will be absent today. We will proceed. First of all, let's all rise. I would ask if Mr. Matt Alvarez from the Republic FC would mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. We would appreciate it. Go home.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice from.
Thank you, sir. Well done. I do have one report, Madam Clerk, out of closed session.
Yes.
If I may, and that is in closed session. Kevin Gardner was appointed as the interim director of the Office of Public Safety Accountability. The vote was unanimous with Councilmember Jennings being absent today.
And Warren.
And Councilmember Warren, excuse me, as well, being absent. Would have voted yes had he been there. Excellent. So we want to thank, let me just thank Kevin Gardner for being willing to step out of retirement to perform this role. It's an interim slot, a very important slot and very important role in our city, and he'll help us with, Kevin is here. Where are you? Kevin, why don't you come on up for 10 seconds here? Bless you. Introduce your family, whatever. I want to welcome you. This is a very important spot. It is interim, but you've come out of retirement after a distinguished career, here with the city to come back and continue your public service, and we're very appreciative of that. Welcome to you, sir.
Thank you. And I'm here by myself. I don't have any family here with me, but I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to working with our community to address and with our public safety agencies to address any issues that come to my attention, and also with our mayor and council to work to find a permanent replacement in this position. Like you said, it's a very important position, and I'm looking forward to doing it.
Good. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing a lot more of Kevin. All right. We do have one special presentation today, which I'd like to begin with, and that is recognizing the 75th anniversary of the Children's Receiving Home of Sacramento. And, you know, so there's many ways to talk about this. One of them is to say that I hope that we live in a society and a community where we aren't celebrating the next 75th anniversary. And that may seem a little bit odd, but it's true because you have done, and those who came before you, heroic work on behalf of many kids who are vulnerable and forgotten. And you give them not only a safe place of refuge, but also some hope that they too can have the kind of life that every kid deserves. And untold numbers of abused, neglected, and traumatized children you have given shelter to, counseling to, and again, a better path for their lives. And you've been able to do this work not only because of the dedicated group of professionals who work with the receiving home, but also because the community has stepped up in a big way. The support tops $1 million here. And that speaks to the heart of this community as well. So we want to just say thank you and present this small token of our appreciation for, come on up, for a job well done, David Ballard and board members, for a job well done. And again, hope that someday we all put you out of business. Okay?
Mayor Steinberg, we agree with you fully, and thank you. You figured in that introduction I must be David Ballard.
Yes.
And this is my board president, Rebecca LaValle.
Hi, Rebecca.
Thank you very much for your support.
Of course.
And we are privileged and honored to be of service to this great community for 75 years. We've opened 24 hours a day, seven days a week since 1944, and we have a deep and abiding commitment to serve the least among us, abused and neglected children who need our help something fierce. And I appreciate your thanks for that, but I'll give it back to you and all of the members of the community. We are able to do that because of the great assistance, help, and support you give to us. So thank you so much, and we are honored to be continuing in this great endeavor.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Rebecca, thank you. Want to say anything, Rebecca?
Just that it is a privilege to fill this role. It's a very needed role, and it is important for us to have the support of the city, the county, and the region.
No question. Let me come down and present this resolution, okay? Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, while you're walking down there, I just wanted to say hi to, at least, because I'm good friends with my dad.
Yeah.
My dad was the head of foster care for the state of California for a long time, has always thought very highly of the program and very highly of you, Dave. So thank you for your great work in Sacramento and really for serving as a model throughout the state. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilperson Ashby, and I really thank the world to your dad, and thank you all for your support, including yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall we take a quick photo op?
We should.
Okay. Official photographer with the phone.
Well, you gotta get in there, yeah.
There you go. That's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Let us now proceed with the consent calendar. Are there any items that members would like to discuss or take off? Moved and seconded, we do have a couple items of public testimony. Madam Clerk, are there any amendments or?
There are no amendments on the consent calendar, and I have one speaker on item number five, Chris Logston.
I'm actually going to withhold some of my comments until this comes back to council later in the month or early in December, but just want to flag this item as something that we need to pay attention to, and I will be in contact with several of you to follow up. But the issue of sidewalk vending is very, very important. It is a way and a possible pathway to economic inclusion for a lot of black vendors here in Sacramento. And so I want to urge the council, as we return to this issue, to think very carefully about how we word and write this ordinance so that we include black vendors in all parts of the city. Thank you.
I have no more speakers. Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, Jay. Go ahead, Schneer.
Chris? I just would ask that you not wait till it comes back to us, because at that point, it's generally too late. If you have comments, please get them forward to us. I've gotten some actual notes on this from vendors in my district, not necessarily African-American, so this is an issue that affects a lot. So I'm happy to sit down and talk with you before then.
Is this on the consent calendar? Councilmember Ashby, did you have a, you're up on the queue. Okay, no worries. Vice Mayor, get up.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to also bring this up on the food vendor. I do want to thank our city staff, who've been doing a number of outreach meetings with some of the street vendors, and I know the benefits of that are that we have a huge diversity in Sacramento. So I just want to encourage our staff to also connect with some of the folks in the African-American community who are doing this sidewalk vending. It's a huge benefit, but we're on the city on the forefront of providing more diversity and more employment options. So if our staff could follow up with them too and connect before their next meeting, that would be helpful.
That's excellent. Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. That passes eight to nothing. I'm an aye too. I forgot to say it. Okay. Let us now move to a very exciting item, my view. Item 13. Michael Jasso, I know, is John Dengberg going to present. I want to make a few opening comments, if I may. Come on up, you guys, to the dais. So we are still over the moon here in the capital city to have celebrated a couple of weeks ago our winning a Major League Soccer franchise. What a moment it was and really continues to be for our city, and it is really only the beginning, because the stadium hasn't even been constructed yet, and the first game has not been played. And think about seasons and seasons and excitement and joy and jobs and economic development. I want to congratulate again and thank all of my city council colleagues here. I want to thank the SAC Republic team. A special thank you to Jeff Harris, whose district this important project sits in, and our passionate fan base and community who stuck with us throughout this long, sometimes in doubt, but never really in doubt, an ultimately successful journey. I could not be more thankful to Ron Burkle, to Matt Alvarez, to Kevin Nagel, to Ben Gumpert, and to the entire Republic team for their continued investment and their belief in our city. So today, we are going to talk about a slightly different, modified, infrastructure financing package that I'm asking the council to approve today. And so you might ask, why is this infrastructure financing approach important? Not only was it the clincher to winning the Major League Soccer bid, to propel even larger investments in the rail yards, but it's also creating many other conversations and opportunities that would not otherwise be possible in our city and in the rail yards. And on that note, I want to just, if I might, provide a little bit of a tease, and I'm just going to leave it at the following. Building off of the Major League Soccer excitement, I believe our city has another once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Let's bring women's professional soccer to Sacramento. We are, yeah, that deserves applause. We are all currently working on it together, and personally, if and when we are collectively successful, it is something I believe will truly be another game changer for Sacramento. So let me hand it over to John Dengberg and to Michael Jasso for the staff presentation, and then to Ben Gumpert, and we'll get into the details a little bit, and that's important, but the big picture here is bright and the future is great. Michael?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So first of all, as you expressed, senior advisor on this project and former ACM, John Dengberg, will be joining me after and available for questions. It was exciting three weeks ago, and just three weeks ago, on October 21st, 2019, when Major League Soccer announced an award of an expansion team to SAC Soccer and Entertainment Holdings LLC and its affiliates, SSEH, including Sacramento Republic FC team. As a reminder, the preliminary term sheet approved on April 2019 by this body provided for the city's formation of an enhanced infrastructure financing district, also known as an EIFD. Revenues derived from the EIFD would be committed to paying for essential infrastructure in the rail yards to support the stadium and surrounding development. This report recommends an amendment of the terms to provide for public financing of the infrastructure with repayment through the EIFD, as had always been envisioned. The city's initial commitment for the infrastructure will be funded with a $27.2 million loan from the city's risk fund. Repayment of this loan will be made by SSEH and the EIFD. Infrastructure costs in excess of $27.2 million would be privately financed and reimbursed through the EIFD. It's anticipated that the EIFD will be fully established and the infrastructure finance plan will be fully adopted by the Stadium Area EIFD Public Financing Authority on December 10th of this year. This amendment will provide greater flexibility for infrastructure financing and assist in lowering the cost of borrowing in an environment of rapid construction and cost escalation, construction cost escalation. This action is for the purpose of policy direction and does not constitute the approval of the loan by this body at this time. With city council approval of the amended term sheet provisions, staff, such as myself and John and others, will proceed to develop definitive loan terms with SSEH and prepare the appropriate loan documents and security instruments. The final loan documents will be presented for city council consideration at a future date, most likely in the spring. Since the PFA will not have sufficient revenue to pay for the services needed immediately after its formation, the city will provide funding to cover these costs. These costs are estimated to be in the order of $74,000, which includes $40,000 for the PFA, $4,000 for bond counsel, and another $30,000 for two years of administration and Professional and technical advisory services will also be needed to support the city staff in the progression of this project. Services include financial advisory services, project implementation, and project management services. A budget appropriation of $100,000 is recommended for these purposes. In closing, it's important to note that the proceeds of the financing will be used solely to design, construct public infrastructure that will support the stadium and surrounding development. The city will own and benefit from completed infrastructure and supports further rail yard development and economic benefits to the city as a whole. Staff is recommending the expenditure budget in the MLS stadium project, MIAP, to be increased by $174,000 with a transfer from available fund balance into the general fund. With that, I close my presentation. Both John and I will be available for questions, and now I invite Ben Gumpert to speak on behalf of SAC Republic, and I believe Ben is also joined by Matt Alvarez, as well as Kevin Nagel. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Jasso, Mr. Dengberg, thank you. John? Ben?
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, John. Thank you, Mayor, and city council, and entire city team. It's a privilege to be in front of you. It's a privilege also to represent Kevin Nagel, who you know, Matt Alvarez, who you know and will come to know even more, Ron Burkle, who couldn't be here. It's a privilege to stand alongside them on, you know, what continues to be historic days and many historic days ahead for Sacramento. Mayor, as you mentioned, October 21st. Remember that day, and I think a lot of people in Sacramento remember that day. It was a special day. I'm sure if you were like me, many of you on this dais received text messages from friends, from family across the city, state, nation, and even across the world, and all expressing, you know, extreme bouts of congratulations for what we together have accomplished. And it truly was incredible. I imagine that day so many times. I play that day in my head before it came about thousands of times, and it exceeded all of my expectations. To see the amount of energy, enthusiasm from every corner of the city and every corner of this community represented on that day in the press conference, and with 12,000 people coming on a Monday afternoon on Capitol Mall to celebrate together, reminds us all about what this is truly about and the impact that a team, which is far beyond just soccer and far beyond the stadium, it's what it brings together in this community, and I thought that was on display. Not only did it blow me away, I'm sure it blew you away, and it certainly blew the commissioner of Major League Soccer away, as he's mentioned to us many times. So Sacramento always shows strong. As you also said, Mr. Mayor, October 21st, that wasn't the beginning, and it's certainly not the end. There's much more work to do. There's much more work for us to do and us to do together. There's more to build. There's more community partnerships to enact. There's more celebrations in the stadium together. There's more internships. There's more construction jobs. There's more fields to build. There's more balls. There's more equipment to give to kids in every corner of this region, and hopefully there's a lot more championship parades to have on the very streets here in Sacramento. This would not be possible without your partnership, your guidance, your leadership. I had the privilege, just last Thursday, of standing with Councilmember Schneer, Rachel Rios, I know Caesar's here from La Familia today, who you'll hear from, on what was formerly Maple Elementary School, building two footwell courts in a community that deserves them and a lot more. And we are committed to building more of those courts in everyone's districts, to find more opportunities, to have places to play for kids, safe places to play for kids, especially in those areas where it's needed most. That is our commitment in every facet of this partnership, to go above and beyond and exceed everything we can, because that's what it takes to make this successful. And that's certainly what our ownership and all of us at SAC Republic are committed to. And again, it's thanks to your bold vision for Sacramento. This was a vital piece and continues to be a vital and missing piece for so long in the process, which got us over the top and got us to that day. So I'm excited to continue to work together, to make sure this is all it can be, to do everything to bring forth and invest in every opportunity that this city, this fan base, and certainly all the great people of Sacramento deserve. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ben. So we do have public testimony here. Let's hear from members of the public. We do have five people signed up then. We'll turn it over to the city council for discussion, debate, and a vote.
The first speaker is Emily Bayme Michaels, then Mike Testa, then Michael Alt.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'll be hearing about that Bayme for a while, I have a feeling. Hi, Mayor and council. What an exciting opportunity to be here today. Emily Bayme Michaels with the Midtown Association. I'm here to stand with what I assume is a bunch of business colleagues who are here to testify as well and offer our support for this exciting moment. Specifically on behalf of Midtown, I really would like to recognize Republic FC for being an incredible part of our community, when you all put your headquarters right in the center of Midtown. 20th and K became even more than just kind of a key area for Midtown. It became a key area for the central city. But today is obviously much bigger than Midtown. This is about an investment that will certainly spur what's occurring in the urban core across the rail yards and invite a whole new group of folks into our city. Soccer is always one of those things that's very approachable, very inclusive, and we just can't think of a single way this isn't a win. So congratulations on having the opportunity to bring this into your district, Jeff. Thank you for fighting so hard to the whole team, and we're excited for a win here. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily.
Mike Testa, then Michael Alt.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, City Manager Chan. My name is Mike Testa. I'm the president and CEO of Visit Sacramento. Starting with their inaugural game in 2014 at Hughes Stadium, Sacramento Republic FC quickly became a part of Sacramento's heart and soul, generating excitement and passion throughout the region. Sacramento's MLS stadium and the team that plays in it will create fresh enthusiasm by offering new entertainment opportunities to people across Northern California. It will also give visitors yet another reason to visit Sacramento, and those visitors will create revenue for local government via hotel taxes, revenue for local businesses from visitor spending, and new jobs for our residents, both in and outside of the rail yards. It's been written that 4% of the world's population actively plays soccer, and the sport boasts 4 billion fans across the world. But the MLS stadium and the other private investments in the rail yards will create reasons above and beyond soccer to attract people to the market. This type of opportunity played out in Sacramento about a month ago, when Sacramento played host to the Aftershock Festival in Discovery Park, the Banda Fest at Rayleigh Field, and the Chris Brown Concert at the Golden One Center. Three different events attracting three different demographics, and all three were at or near capacity. Adding in the MLS stadium to the rail yards creates another entertainment venue in Sacramento, whether it's for soccer or other field sport tournaments, concerts, or other events, and I believe that this city will see tremendous return on this investment. This investment by the city makes sense, and Visit Sacramento supports moving this item forward. Thank you.
Next speaker is Michael Alt, then Dr. Caesar Castaneda, then Shay Haddo.
Mayor, members of council, Michael Alt with the Downtown Partnership. I think you've heard Ben in his comments say something that we truly do believe. This is about more than just soccer. Yes, SAC Republic FC has been a tremendous asset to this community. They've built more than just a brand for this team. They've built a brand for this region. We think this is truly, not to use a pun, but a game changer for the rail yards. And when you really look, I know it's been said, I think I've heard the mayor say it a couple of times, we are doubling the size of downtown with the development of the rail yards. This will be a catalyst, the development taking place around it. If we just look at the Golden One Center, since it's been developed, we've seen over $4 billion of investment, and this will really change the way this region looks at this community, looks at Sacramento, and I think looks at our brand. We ask you support it. We think it's an exciting time, and we look forward to the development of the rail yards. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Next speaker is Dr. Caesar Castaneda, then Shay Haddo.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and council members. I am representing La Familia Council and Center, and I'm here in support of the newly MLS Sacramento Republic. I want to speak to you from a partner perspective. Sacramento Republic has been incredibly generous with their time and their support to be able to provide clinics for our community, to be able to provide other activities that bring the community together. I think it was mentioned earlier about unity, and I think that from a mental wellness perspective, we know that extracurricular activities will be important for our community, but more than anything else, you know, soccer or any other sport does bring the community together. And I think that identification with your city is really, really important, to have a strong community and its representative. And the partnership from the Sacramento Republic has been really noticeable. As was mentioned earlier, on Thursday, we inaugurated the new courts, and in less than five days, we've had multiple people in the community asking to be able to utilize them and to be able to be a part of that. So things like this bring the community together, and we really want to support this motion too. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you to La Familia.
Next speaker is Shay Haddo.
Hi, my name is Shay Haddo, and I am the owner and founder of Alpha Girl Soccer Academy, which is, the mission is to empower and develop girls through the game of soccer. First off, congrats to SAC Republic for finally being awarded the MLS franchise. There were several factors that made this possible, and one of the biggest ones was the dedication that SAC Republic has to the community. I've lived in three different states, and I've never seen a community band around a sports team like this. I recently went to the block party, and I was blown away by the support of the entire city. So this community loves SAC Republic. As a small business owner dedicated to improving youth soccer in our community, and specifically women's soccer, I'm forever grateful for the dedication and support that SAC Republic has shown me and also women's soccer. There are huge gaps in the women's game, including support and education, and SAC Republic has made huge strides in filling those gaps. SAC Republic has shown dedication to the community by hosting all-girls clinics, training more women to be coaches, working with at-risk youth, and by helping coaches make their job easier. I believe that SAC Republic becoming an MLS city will even help our community more. Not only will it provide us with more of a bond as a community, but it'll help to grow the youth game. As youth, the more games they can go to, the more exposure they'll get to the game, the more kids will be interested in playing soccer. I've seen this firsthand with the World Cup, and I believe that this coming to Sacramento will do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here today, for your enthusiasm. All right, that is the public testimony. Let's turn it over to members of the city council. I'll start with Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, right off the bat, I'd like to move the amended term sheet. I'd like to welcome, I'd like to welcome Matt Alvarez, and thank you and Ron Burkle personally, and I think on behalf of the entire council, for investing in Sacramento. It's very clear that you believe in our city, that you think that we have great potential, and we welcome you here with open arms. This stadium is going to be tremendous for our entire city, and it was exemplified in the enthusiasm of the block party and just the acceptance, you know, when the commissioner came. Pretty exciting. I mean, the excitement that the Republic FC has generated in this city is really tremendous. It's a phenomenon. I've gone to other cities and seen Major League Soccer games. There's nothing like the Battalion FC anywhere, you know? I mean, these people really love the game. In fact, to make it hard to hear anything, but, you know, it's pretty exciting. So the benefits of soccer to the rail yards development, they can't be overstated. You know, it's very hard to get infrastructure built when you do any project in a city. It's a tremendous cost. It's always at the front end, and it's essential to getting anything It's a tremendous cost, it's always at the front end, and it's essential to getting anything built. This EIFD is a tremendous financial tool to enable that to happen in a timely fashion. These are all really big benefits, and the mayor has tasked me with being the head of the Public Financing Authority, which I'm very proud to do, because this is not only a good economic tool to get infrastructure built, but it's really cost-neutral to the city. We get a lot of infrastructure built, and it gets paid backs by tax increment with interest. It's a good financial deal. This is a big win, and if we open the door for a developer to come in and build us a stadium, that's exactly what we should do and what we are going to do. I have to thank you, Mr. Mayor, personally, because this deal has come and gone three times that I'm aware of since I've been elected, and it was your tenacity, Mr. Steinberg, that I think brought this home. We had several false starts, but you were just dogged about this, and, you know, I can't give you enough praise. I think you've done the city a really big, solid favor here, and it's really a testament to your personal veracity and energy.
Thank you.
So I appreciate it an awful lot. There are other benefits that this stadium will bring to the River District, you know, just adjacent to the rail yards, a languishing area that's been sort of neglected, commercial, industrial for years. This stadium is going to create an opportunity for the River District to just blossom, and that's very exciting. Both of these are in District 3, and both of these areas are places where I've placed a lot of energy and entitlements and trying to get things like the Underground in, to get a stormwater outfall in, a Third Street sewer, and things that you all might not think about day-to-day, but they are part of my lot. And this is really catalytic. This opens the door to development of the rail yard, which is really amazing. There's a lot of momentum going there now. There's MLS, there's the DGS building, there's the Superior Court, the Kaiser Hospital. We are about to see our city center double in size. In the next five years, Sacramento will be a very different place than it is now, with lots of opportunities. Another benefit is increased ridership on regional transit. The Green Line is going to be essential for getting our fans to soccer. We already know that fans like to take light rail to soccer, proved it at Hughes Stadium. And once we double-track the Green Line, I think that we'll be in good shape to move an awful lot of fans to the River District, the rail yards, to Township 9. It's really, it has so many benefits, it's kind of hard to articulate all of them. The other thing is this, and this one's very important to me. Soccer is the world's sport. Almost every child in the city has kicked a ball around at some point in their growth cycle, and soccer is an affordable sport. It's a family affair. Going to a Republic FC game is going to be within reach of all the families in the city, and that's pretty dynamic, you know? It really is. So it's going to touch almost every single family in the city of Sacramento. This is another great moment in Sacramento's history. I agree that we are moving forward, we're on a roll, and once again, thank you to all concerned, to John Dangberg, who's putting a tremendous amount of energy into making this go forward. You've got the right mind for the job, John, and you really pulled out some stops here. And Michael Jasso, you're right there, too, just moving this forward and making it happen. And Marco as well. So thank you all for your efforts. I can't wait to turn dirt, you know? The rail yard sat as a superfund site for decades, and we're finally just at the cusp where it's all going to come together. It's a very exciting moment in Sacramento history. And Ben, thank you for all that you do for the FC and Kevin. It's great to see you here, and I really enjoyed our conversation the other night, but it takes the effort of so many people to create an opportunity like this, and here we are. So it's a happy day. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Harris, Councilmember Harris. Thank you for all the work that you've done, Mayor, on this. I know that today probably feels like a comma in a longer story, because we had such a triumph the day that the Commissioner came and we got to announce that the franchise was being awarded. Now there's a tremendous amount of work to be done, and rarely in a career do you get two things like this. But this is the second time during my time on the dais we've gotten to work on a very significant project. But what I kind of want to remind people about, because everything Councilmember Harris said is absolutely true, this is an egalitarian sport. This is about creating opportunities for people who are looking and needing those opportunities, whether they're little girls who want to grow up to be like Mia Hamm, or whether they're little boys who want to feel the opportunity to get out on the field and kick a ball. We know the power of soccer because we've seen it in our own community, not only through Sac Republic, but through street soccer and through so much else. But I also know that we've seen the power of trying to transform the rail yards for a long, long time. When I was doing the City Planning Academy in 2003, we saw a plan for the rail yards that was done in the 1920s to convert it into part of the city. Here we are in almost the 2020s, six weeks out, and we are finally on the cusp of that, but we know in city government that we can't develop an area that has no roads, that has no sewers, that has no power infrastructure. And the amount of adversity and overcoming of that adversity that certainly Warren Smith, Joe Waggoner, now Kevin Nagel, Matt Alvarez, Ron Burkle, and the whole staff have done, by the way, happy belated birthday, Mr. Gumpert. It sounds like you were on the road all day yesterday, today. But it underscores the motto that Sac Republic gave back to us, which is that we are the indomitable city. We look at adversity not as a reason to walk away, but as a challenge to rise to. And so the city's role in this is really a traditional role. In the overall cost of the franchise, the stadium, this is a really minor amount, but much like the downtown commons and the existing Golden One Center, we looked at as an opportunity to jumpstart a part of the city that had been failing economically. During the recession, we saw businesses closing. Now with the rail yards, what we see, and I see it very clearly, because like Sarah Palin, I can see this from my house, basically. If I could get on my roof, I'm sure I could actually see it, but this is an opportunity to take what is lost economic vitality and invigorate it into 240 acres that the city's worked so hard to see remediated, to see opportunities for bridges to be built, and as Councilmember Harris said, a hospital, a courthouse, housing, all those things. And this is the spark that will help all of those things happen. And so there's nothing better we could do as a city government than to build roads and sewers, and there's no better end to serve than to see this rail yards finally come to life after 100 years of talk. This minor change in the term sheet is not really what's going to change it. It's ultimately the ability for somebody to flush their toilet, to drive, to get water. That is what we're talking about here today, and that is the whole purpose that this government has fought so long and so hard to turn these 240 acres into something miraculous, and the miracle has been brought to us, thanks to Ron, Matt, Kevin, and so many others who helped make sure that this day could come. And again, I think this is just a comma in the overall story. I'd be remiss not to say the payback here is guaranteed. It's either going to come through tax, property taxes, or through the personal commitment of the team. This is not anything that has any risk, and so again, we could do nothing better today than to approve this item, do it resoundingly, and do it because it's what's in the best interest of our city, its people, and its future.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. I think I inadvertently knocked Vice Mayor Gett off the board here, so I'm going to let him go next and...
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. And again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for keeping the resiliency and the pressure to find a good deal for the city of Sacramento and working with investors, you know, Mr. Alvarez, Mr. Nagel, Mr. Gumpert, for being steadfast on finding a good outcome for the city. And I get the pleasure of now serving, thank you for the appointment, as Vice Chair to Councilmember Harris, on the Infrastructure Financing District, and I'm excited for the opportunity to look at making sure that our roadways and our sewer lines and all the utilities are in place to revitalize a forgotten area. As reported in the press, I think it was either today or yesterday, just construction alone, there's going to be over $300 million of activity that's going to happen, that would not happen but for this action that we're taking today at the rail yards, let alone all of the ancillary benefits from services and partners that are going to help create a great experience for all the Republic fans and even also the opposing fans, too, you know? But we're going to make sure that everyone has a wonderful time there, and because, and to do that, we're going to have, I think, to look at what all of the businesses that are involved in. And it's my understanding here that it's still very, very early in the process, and you haven't selected a general contractor yet or any of that at the point. But Ben, maybe if you could answer just a quick question on your thoughts here for us here at the dais, if you can come to the dais real quick? You know, I think from what we heard earlier in public testimony, what's your vision to ensure that local businesses, that local hire, and as you heard earlier today in public comment from other items, something that this council strives to do, that we encourage minority and women-owned businesses from Sacramento to be actively included in all of the great activity that's going to happen here? Because I think this will be the start, as was mentioned, this will be the start that will invigorate everything else, and I think from the very beginning, we should have that, those positive aspirations. Could you talk about that vision?
Yeah, absolutely, Councilmember Garrett. Thank you for the question. I mean, to speak to it, everything that we do at Sacramento Republic starts local, starts here. That is how this club was founded, that is how this club will operate and will always operate. So I think I should first just state from a philosophical standpoint and commitment, that is always going to be the case in every aspect that we do. As you mentioned, from a construction standpoint, we're fairly early in the process, hopefully selecting our general contractor in the next several weeks. Regardless of the direction of that general contractor, you better believe that there are going to be commitments to SBE, LBE, women, minority-owned businesses. We will do community outreach early and often with all various subcontractors to make sure that they have the information, the checkpoints, the assistance necessary to be part of this project. Again, that is our commitment, that has been our belief from day one, and we will continue to do that. Certainly even beyond construction, there is moves, just like we've talked about, around community builds, around hiring of our staff, not just our permanent staff, many of whom you see here today, which will be a growing staff, but to the ushers and ticket takers and custodial staff and everyone else that will be part of the stadium, soccer games, concerts, women's professional sports, and everything else that will be part of this. We've continued, we've worked with Juma Ventures currently, we're continuing to forward that partnership and many others, again, to make sure that this is both local, both focused on priority zip codes, priority opportunities for those that need it most. And, you know, that will continue in every aspect.
Well, thank you. I do appreciate that, and I hope you'll work with us in this effort. We've had some great experiences, both in the Convention Center, the Golden One Center, on how we have tried to achieve those goals. And I want to echo the point that you mentioned, that you started local and that the organization has started local, and at least from a household of three Republic fans, only two season ticket holders, we don't have to pay for the second one until next year.
Right.
But, until he breaks that age mark. But we're excited about this, because it has been, from the time you guys were playing over at Hughes Stadium to where you are today, that it's been this ground, grassroots type of growth. And as we grow, I think that's got to be the big message, is that it's from our own community that we're going to make that expansion. Again, I want to thank all of you here today. Soccer, I mean, you know, growing up with it, it was one of those, the best moments where our families and friends would get together to both enjoy the excitement of it, sometimes the sorrow of it. I mean, you know, and we want to give a shout out to Section 109, who, all of our crazy fans on Section 109, who endure, we like to stick through either the 150-degree heat till the end or the monsoon that we had this last year during Latino Heritage Night, or even the Nats. I don't know where those came from, that weird swarm of Nats. But in either case, it's been a great experience. I'm excited about this opportunity. Thank you again to all the partners, the community members, the Republic fans, Mr. Mayor, for putting this together, and I look forward to all this local activity we'll have.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Gett, Councilmember Ashby, Mayor Tuputumashbi, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to start with the thank yous, too, and, you know, a lot of times, the peace that is ours, the peace that is the city's, where we get to say something from this dais, gives us an opportunity to kind of highlight people who you might, maybe you know that they've been working on it and maybe you don't, or I think sometimes people think that, you know, we say we're working on things and maybe we are, maybe we aren't, but we really support it. But this one truly wouldn't have happened without Darryl. He worked really hard on it, and so did the last mayor. It wouldn't be happening without Kevin Johnson either. But the handing of that baton between those two is how we got here today, and so congratulations to you. I think this is a really huge victory that does sit squarely in your lap, and Kevin did a great job starting the race, and you did a great job finishing the race. So kudos to having two good mayors at the right time, the two right guys at the right moment to get us across there. Kevin Nagel, if you had to pick an MVP in this whole thing, it would clearly be you, because when everybody else was walking away or hadn't gotten here yet, you stood there firmly for Sacramento, and I believe you filled those gap years for us. Said it before, I'll believe it for the rest of my life. And then all those people that started up this project, the Erica Bjork, which is why we all have such cool swag, and Warren Smith, you know, those guys who convinced us to try on this, you know, professional soccer thing that seemed like kind of a cool idea. How important, how important to get to this day. And then, you know, now, Matt, to have you sitting in the front row there, and Ron Burkle, and you guys coming together to help us really get across the finish line and believe in Sacramento. It helps a city like this to have somebody like you walk through the door and join our team and be a part of it. It's a really big deal. And I love your family that I've gotten to know lately, and just what a very Sacramento person you are to come in and help us and be a part of that win. So I want to just take that moment to thank you guys. And then Barry Broome, you fought this one a long time through both of those mayors to try to help them get here, and I think it's a big deal. I know when I very first met you, the first time you visited from Arizona, and Kevin wanted me to meet you, the first thing you said to me was, "We got to do something about that rail yard. You guys need to land a big project in that rail." You cannot keep letting millions of people drive by that rail yard. And I know Jeff Harris is super excited about this. He's been a great champion, and it's a really big victory for him to see this investment happening during his watch there. And then, like so many of these big deals, they wouldn't happen, the city wouldn't get to play the role that we're playing if we didn't have John Dangberg. So I have had the opportunity to work with you on other projects, big ones, but really to put together this kind of deal, the city does need their own architect. We can't just rely on the outside people. And so it's important to me that people understand that the city champion internally, doing all that number crunching and counting, has been you, with some help in the mayor's office, I think from Scott White, too. But congratulations to you guys, Scott, and you, John, for working, you work so hard on these things over the weekends and all year long, and when nobody else is thinking about it, and we were all moving on to something else, you guys are still working on it, and that is also how you get to this point. The other thing I want to say is that this project is really meaningful to a lot of people, not just Republic fans, but to people in this city who are going to enjoy benefits in their life because we're making this investment. And I know some folks probably read the paper, or they might see something on TV and go, "Wow, that stadium really costs a lot, and that seems like a lot of money." It's important for folks to understand that that's private investment. The city's piece to this is money that would never be realized, meaning it would never come to fruition if we didn't build the stadium to begin with. This investment structure, this EIFD term that we're all tossing around means, hey, this project is going to generate some revenue for the city. We get to push that money back into making the project actually happen. But how much Matt and Kevin and those guys, Ben, and everybody decides to pay for the arena, that's going to be private investment. So using this amount to leverage hundreds of millions of private investment into our city is huge, as Councilmember Hanson stated, for finishing building out an area that we really... really, we couldn't do on our own. It's going to take putting all of these things together. I've had the opportunity to be a part of many of the SAC Republic's movements, especially around little girls, and She Can Coach, and Watch Me, and just reminding the whole world out there that there are little girls everywhere who love playing soccer, too. And they grow up to be big girls who would like to play soccer, too, and we'd like to create a space for them. And I know that the Republic is dedicated to that end, and you can continue to count on me to be a partner in any regard with that. Ben, you've done a phenomenal job ushering this team to this space. And you have a great team, and Scott and Allison and your whole crew, they're amazing, and you've done a wonderful job. The youth that will benefit from this is like an immeasurable number, not just because they get to go to the games, but because this type of investment is happening in their city. And I'll say something that I said back when we made the same decision for the Kings, and that is this: This isn't about a sports team. It is about investing in the quality and type of life that families get to have when they live in this area. What kind of amenities do they get to have for their children, for their relatives that come to visit them? What kind of life do you have when you live in Sacramento? And this contributes so much to the good. So I'm thrilled to vote yesterday and really grateful to the partners. So thank you for giving me an opportunity to express those opinions.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashby. Councilman Shneur.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to be brief. I totally agree with everything my colleagues have said, and I think they've said it really well. Just want to add a few words of thanks and just one thought or two thoughts. It's been a long and winding road for you guys, and I want to really appreciate Kevin and Matt, your persistence and your patience in working through all of this process. I know there were times where it didn't look very good, but you've made it happen. And to the mayor, I think his leadership on this one has really been great, and we wouldn't be here without that. So I think it's important for so many reasons, and I agree with what my colleagues have said. This is about a lot more than football, or football, as we say, right? Or a lot more than soccer, and it's a lot more than the stadium. And it's even more than the build-out of the rail yards, which I know is really important economically to us. It's really about building community. Just a couple of things that you all have done that I want to note. First, Ben brought this up, but last Thursday, we were able to dedicate one of the foot hall courts over at La Familia. I know that that court will be used every light hour or into the dark when we call it off. It is a community need that has been filled, but just coming in and doing it, and even there, we had challenges logistically to get it done, but it was important enough to you all to put time and effort in to make it happen and make it happen for those young people in the neighborhood who so vitally need it. So I think that is just indicative of who you are as an organization. The other thing I want to pick up on is Juma Ventures. So this is a group that is national, that is working at Golden One, working at Rayleigh Field, and employs young people, not only to employ them at games, but to work with them to make sure they get into college, to build scholarships for them, and really to improve young people's lives. So those are two things that I think you can't put a price tag on, but shows so much about who you are, again, as an organization. And I just want to say thank you. We appreciate you coming and being part of our community, Matt. We look forward to it. We look forward to Ron being up here as well. And I just want to end by saying, and I told Ben this, my son lives in Seattle and went to the game over the weekend and was a fan. And what he talked to me about, other than the 69,000 people that were there, so we need, I think, a bigger stadium, we got to beat that. But other than that, it was just a feeling that was pervasive throughout the city about what had happened. And building that community, we've seen it over and over with the Kings. Hopefully, we'll see it again with the Kings. And I know that we'll see it with FC Republic. And I want to challenge whoever our next mayor is to see what pro-sport team they can break to Sacramento, because I think you've set the bar.
Hockey.
Curling.
You know what our interests are up here now. Anyway, thank you so much for what you've done. Thank you so much, Councilman Shneur.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought it was going to be an ice hockey team, the next one to work on. But it's been a long road. I remember meeting with the commissioner, and Kevin Nagel was there, a whole bunch of people were there, along with Kevin Johnson, to talk about getting a Major League Soccer franchise in Sacramento. And our new mayor's come in and picked up the baton and carried it across the finish line. It has been a long road. But what's before us today is not soccer, per se. What's before us today is a motion to approve the transfer of $174,000 from the general fund and to relook at the term sheet with the idea of moving 27 million from the RIS Fund to provide infrastructure. So the question comes, if we take $27 million out of our RIS Fund, 27.2 to be exact, where does that leave the RIS Fund?
Councilmember, at this point in time, the RIS Fund is fully funded per year policy at the 80% of projected level over a long-term period. Those monies are reviewed annually by an actuary, and the amounts that we have in that fund are then invested through our Pool A. And the way this is being looked at is that this is just a different, a very secure investment of our RIS Pool funds in a vehicle different than our Pool A fund. And so these will be, it's a loan, it is not just an infrastructure grant, it is a loan. It will be fully amortized over a period that is yet to be finally negotiated and paid back through two sources. One, through direct payments from the developer, what we call the development company that is affiliated with Sacramento Soccer, and the EIFD funds. So it's fully secured, we'll have other backup security on top of that. So it's really viewed as an investment of our RIS Pool, which is fully funded.
So we don't have an exact date at this point that's going to be negotiated?
Well, what you are approving here today is just some very broad terms to give staff direction to go negotiate terms. We will come back to this council with a full set of terms, loan documents that you will approve, and the loan would be funded after that. So this is, you're not approving.
Understand, you're going to come back to us with when the loans will be paid back?
That is correct. All the details and terms will come back to the council, probably in March of 2020. That's what we're targeting.
So when we talk about infrastructure, it's kind of a catch-all term. What exactly are we talking about doing and where?
Okay.
Is it the whole rail yard or just the area around the stadium, proposed stadium? What are we talking about?
That is correct. It is the area around the stadium. There's a total of 31 acres that is in the EIFD. Most of the infrastructure that is being funded with the 27.2 million will be within that area. There is some level of off-site infrastructure that serves that area that will be funded, such as a sewer trunk line that will serve that area. But those types of infrastructure serve more than just the 31 acres. They will actually benefit the rest of the area, but the EIFD revenues only come from that 31 acres. It includes a light rail station, a new light rail station on Seventh Street in order to provide access, not only for the stadium and events, but the other 330 days of the year when there's not a soccer game. So we've got sidewalk improvements, roadway improvements, utilities that will come to back of curb for that entire 31 acres. The stadium is only going to take maybe 14 acres out of the total 31 acres. So this has broader benefit than just the stadium.
Okay. So the PFA that is being established with the 174, is that right?
I'm sorry, that's being established with what?
The $174,000 is for establishment of the PFA?
That is in part. $74,000 is for not establishment of the PFA, but to have representation for the PFA, both general counsel for the PFA as well as bond counsel for the PFA. And there are some administrative requirements over the life of the EIFD, but the EIFD isn't going to have revenue to pay those, so we're funding two years of those administrative costs. And...
Is someone else paying into that? Because when I add the numbers up, it comes up to more than 174.
It should...
$100,000 for project implementation, $74,000 for admin, $4,000 for a council?
Those are, the $74,000 is broken into the three categories of bond counsel, general counsel, and administration. $30,000, $4,000...
That's how we get to 174. I got it. So in the term sheet that you put together, will you be addressing the local hire provisions that we have? Any project over a million dollars will hire people from certain areas of the city that have been underserved?
Yes, sir. In the term sheet, there were specific requirements to meet in terms of community benefit, and those will be encompassed in a couple of agreements broadly in what we're going to, we're calling the comprehensive agreement, that is a broad agreement that covers details for all of the terms. And then a more specific agreement that will be between the city, the general contractor, and the development company to meet the targets, the local hiring targets. And what we put in the term sheet was to basically match what we did for the Golden One Center.
The Golden One? That was with priority apprenticeships?
Yes.
Okay. I could go on and on about why I like soccer, but I'm not going to do it. I think my colleagues...
Oh, go ahead.
My colleagues have talked about that enough. My questions are not to be construed as to say that I'm not supporting this, but we have a question on the table before the council, and it's our responsibility to make sure that we are being responsible with people's money. So my questions are directed towards the issue on the table and the issue that we have to vote on, and to make sure that I understand and I can explain to my constituents what we're doing. So, but I'm all behind the soccer team. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Warren.
I would be brief for real, and I want to, first of all, just say thank you to all of the members of our fantastic new soccer organization here in Sacramento, all of you that have come in from out of town, and welcome. I know Matt is coming in from, I believe, Southern California. So I want to thank you and Kevin, who's been here a long time, Ben, and the rest of the team. Thank you guys for what you're doing. I want to thank John, the city staff for working on it. I also want to thank our mayor. I think our mayor did a fantastic job of being out front and letting you all know. And the folks from MLS know that Sacramento was going to stand with you guys to help make this happen, so thank you for that. I think the format that, some of the questions from Councilman Garrett or Vice Mayor Garrett and Councilman Carr about local hire and inclusion, I think you all recognize that that's important to us. We had a very successful go at it with the Golden One Center, so I'm hopeful that some of those tools that were developed during that process you'll use in doing the new soccer stadium. But I see this as being a tremendous new addition and foundational piece to the city of Sacramento that really helps us on our way to being the kind of international city that we've been talking about. I think soccer is even more of an international sport, will bring more visibility to Sacramento, and I'm very excited to support it. I also got to say that my son, my youngest son, was a member of the SAC Republic Academy team for two years, several years ago. And so in my heart, I was really hoping that in Sacramento, and if he continues to progress, hopefully at some point, he'll either be playing against the Republic or playing for the Republic. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you. Just a closing comment. I appreciate all the kind words, but this is a team effort all the way. We do it together, and we're capable of great, great things when we work together. I know, John, you wanted to thank a few members of the staff. I want to thank you for sticking in there. Michael Jasso, and again, thank Barry Broome, who pushing us on all fronts here, and some of the folks, again, that came before, you know, we all stand on the shoulders. You're right, Kevin Johnson deserves an enormous amount of credit because he started this, and I appreciate you mentioning him, just like Erica Bjork and Warren Smith and Joe Wagner. And we're lucky to have succession of great civic leadership. And now, you, Matt, by the way, are going to love this city. If you don't already, and I know you do, this place just envelops you. And you're already a friend, and you're going to be a true partner in you and your team in everything that we do. And a special thank you to my staff who've worked so hard on this throughout, Kelly Reavis and Scott White especially, for really sticking with me in every chapter of this thing, both of you. I really appreciate you. I just want to end with this. I love Ben Gumpert's story about what happened last week with La Familia, because I think it really does epitomize what this whole thing is about. And so this is my plea to all the people of Sacramento around our direction. We must continue to insist that building a dynamic cosmopolitan city is not in conflict with, but in concert with investing in our neighborhoods. Because we have to do it all and forge forward on all fronts, and one helps the other. You're darn right, we're going to insist, and we're going to work with you, because I know that's your commitment, too, to ensuring that we're drawing from our neighborhoods when it comes to the workforce, when it comes to participation. And at the same time, this kind of economic development in the barren rail yards, how many decades? It going to increase our economic and our tax base in a way that's going to give us more ability collectively to be able to invest directly in our neighborhoods and in our kids. This is great stuff, and it isn't the opposite of a neighborhood investment strategy. It's all together. Great day, great work. Can't wait to get started. The motion has been made, and it has been seconded. All in, oh, John, you wanted to thank a few people. I apologize.
That's fine, Mayor. Thank you. First, I want to thank you for your leadership, and you were at the point of the spear on this one and the negotiations and did a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
And I really enjoyed working with your staff. Kelly and Scott have just been wonderful. But, you know, behind the scenes, you know, I get to sit here and get all the kudos, but I tell you, I, there's a lot of this I don't do. And there were some very heavy lifts for this project. For example, establishing an EIFD, first time it's been done in this city. There's only been a couple of these adopted in the state. And this one was adopted in a highly complicated area with the layers of financing that are left over from redevelopment and our consolidation of our redevelopment areas. But Sherri Smith and Eric Frederick did just a remarkable job in putting this together way ahead of schedule and way in advance of what we needed to be prepared and ready to move on that. And Don Holm, who came up with the idea of going to our RIS Pool and using that as a source. That is not something I thought of. That is something she brought to the table as your budget and finance director. And her staff, like Jason Bader, were just wonderful. Our legal staff with Matt Ruiac and Jeff Massey have been fantastic and supportive in helping us solve problems instead of, like many lawyers do, put barriers in the way. They are problem solvers that...
I resemble that comment.
They have moved many, many barriers. Richard Rich, Marco Gonzalez have been just great in terms of leading this whole effort in the rail yards, which, again, is a very complex environment to develop in, and they've been absolutely remarkable. And I just want to thank them personally for all of the work you've done to make this happen. And there's a, there's a whole lot of other people I didn't mention, but hopefully at the time comes, I'll thank them.
We'll thank them all. All right, without further ado, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain, that passes unanimously, eight to nothing. I know if Councilmember Jennings were here, he would be the ninth vote as well. Go forward. Thank you. Yeah, hey, let's take a picture. It's a great idea. Historic moment. Let's do it. What, do you want to go down there?
You can go down there.
Let's go down, let's all go down. Come on.
Happy birthday. How is the game?
Come on.
By the way, this is yours. It was sitting on a chair for you.
The second game.
I took a whole bunch of them.
Oh, thank you, competitor.
I was using Angela's phone. So she has a whole bunch of them.
I can't hang her up for the rest of it. No, I should probably leave then.
All right, everyone. I would take a motion to adjourn for the rest of the year. Okay, everyone. We do have more, we do have more city business, important city business today. We're on item number 14. We have the two SHRA items. Run, one related to Proposition 2 and the other relating to the multifamily lending guidelines. I know these were continued from last week and I was not, I was not here. Do you want to present both of them together? Is that? Oh, they're separate. Okay, let's go one at a time. Never mind.
That is actually a PowerPoint and the other one's just a presentation. Good afternoon. My name is Susan Veezy and I'm a program manager in the Development Department at SHRA. And today I will be providing you with an overview of funding resources available for the construction and rehabilitation of affordable housing and request approval to administer the permanent local housing allocation on behalf of the city. SHRA provides gap finance assistance and issues mortgage revenue bonds, which when used in conjunction with the low income housing tax credit, allow for the development of affordable multifamily housing. By incorporating the functions of the Local Housing Finance Agency with the city and county housing authorities, SHRA is able to provide a one-stop shop for developers who require project-based housing vouchers or other resources. The common missions also provide for administrative economies of scale. Affordable housing expertise within SHRA improves efficiency and provides time savings for our development partners. Our in-house expertise is broad and includes everything from underwriting and construction oversight to long-term compliance, inspections, and refinancing. Serving the county as well as the city also facilitates the coordination of county behavioral health services and housing resources with the development finance functions for both jurisdictions. This is particularly significant given the newer funding streams for permanent supportive housing. The need for affordable housing within our jurisdiction is significant. The nonprofit California Housing Partnership Corporation estimates a current need of 63,000 additional units of affordable housing county-wide. The average cost to create an affordable workforce housing in Sacramento County is $90,000 per unit, when those funds are also layered with tax credits and bonds.
But, I'm sorry, just so we're talking apples to apples here, because there's a common vernacular about the amount of public subsidy overall that is needed to build a single unit of affordable housing. You say 90,000 of local, but when you layer that with the state sources and taxes, what is the number on average?
I would say probably $350,000.
That's the neighborhood. Much more expensive in other parts of the state, by the way.
Well, that's not the total development cost. That would be the subsidy.
No, that's what I'm talking about. The subsidy is much more in other parts of the state as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Thank you for the question. Let's see. Last year, the city's mixed income housing ordinance and housing trust fund programs generated approximately $2.5 million. In addition, a little over $2.6 million in federal home funds were available for affordable housing. The city has affordable housing impact fees on both commercial and residential development. The amount of funds generated each year is dependent upon how much new construction is underway. Attachment 3D report provides a more thorough description of these programs. Home is a federal entitlement grant received annually. Home dollars are subject to an expenditure deadline and funding amounts vary with federal appropriations. In 2017, the California Legislature approved SB 2, which provided the state's first permanent source of funding for affordable housing. The revenue is generated by a recording fee on real estate transactions. Beginning in the second year of the program, a substantial portion of the resources will flow to local jurisdictions. However, funding to individual jurisdictions is not anticipated to be very high and therefore jurisdictions are being encouraged to aggregate their resources and to combine the SB 2 funds with local housing trust fund dollars. The SB 2 funds can be used for a broad range of affordable housing activities. The state estimates the city's annual entitlement will be approximately $1.9 million and is proposing a requirement that 20% of these funds be expended on homeownership programs. Today, we are requesting authority to administer these funds on behalf of the city. SHRA is in a position to combine this permanent local housing allocation, or PLHA, with the local housing trust funds that we already administer. In addition, SHRA has the infrastructure in place to meet any homeownership requirement the state imposes on local governments. In 2018, the voters approved a new housing bond, the first such bond in 12 years. Most of the bond proceeds flow to programs which require developers to apply directly to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Attachment 4 to the staff report provides a more thorough description of these programs. The most significant program funded by the Prop 1 bond is the multifamily housing program, commonly referred to as MHP, which our development partners will compete for to close large funding gaps that SHRE resources alone cannot fill. We are encouraged by the initial scoring of the first round of MHP as it appears Lavender Courtyard will receive funding. However, many other projects will not due to the significant demand for resources. Cal Home is a homebuyer program which provides down payment assistance for low-income homebuyers. The Local Housing Trust Fund Match is exactly that, a state match of local housing funds. SHRA has applied for and received both Cal Home and Housing Trust Fund Match programs in the past and will do so again. It is important to note that HCD may allow the Housing Trust Fund Match from Prop 1 to match the PLHA dollars if those PLHA dollars have been combined with local housing trust funds. To illustrate if the city has $2 million in local trust fund dollars and then adds another $2 million through the PLHA, the city is eligible to apply for $4 million in these Prop 1-funded matching resources. Other Prop 1-funded programs include the Infill Infrastructure Grant and Transit Oriented Development Program, which developers apply for directly. Through the state's Cap and Trade Program, resources are available to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions. At this time, the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities, or AHSC, program and the Transformative Climate Communities, or TCC, program provide targeted funding for affordable housing. We have worked with developers to apply for AHSC and we're finally successful in the fourth round of funding. It has been difficult for the Sacramento region to compete because the focus of AHSC is on housing density and densities tend to be significantly higher in places like LA and the Bay Area. Twin Rivers, now Marisol Village, has received both a TCC and an AHSC award and the rail yards also received an AHSC award. It is critical to underscore the importance of having access to the local funds to ensure that we can provide leverage to our development partners who apply for these state programs. Local funds are needed to be competitive. In SHRA's most recent funding rounds, we advertised $1.4 million in available resources and received requests for approximately $26 million in gap funds. We have strong development partners who have engaged in significant pre-development time and expense to bring shovel-ready affordable housing projects to Sacramento. And what is missing is the subsidy dollars to make these housing concepts a reality. The state has converted a portion of the Mental Health Services Act resources into bonds to fund affordable housing development programs. Counties are the lead agencies for identifying projects and for applying to the state for funds. And as I mentioned previously, SHRA is working closely with Sacramento County to identify projects. We received No Place Like Home funding awards for the applications we submitted last year. The two developments, one in the city of Sacramento and the other in Citrus Heights, will provide 156 units of permanent supportive housing. SHRA and the county are partnering again for round two of this No Place Like Home and underwriting two more projects to submit to the state for funding. The Special Needs Housing Program is also funded through the Mental Health Services Act funds and that program is administered through Cal HFA. These funds can be used to refinance or develop new permanent supportive housing. Lastly, Governor Newsom's budget included $500 million to support Cal HFA's Missing Middle Program that funds mixed income rental housing. The budget also expands the state housing tax credit program, which will meaningfully increase the resources available to developers. In conclusion, while there are significantly more resources for affordable housing development in the state than there were a couple of years ago, only SB 2 provides funding direct to local governments through the permanent local housing allocation. The bulk of the new resources coming from the state are competitive and projects will require local leverage dollars to increase their chances of success. And given SHRA's role as the city's local housing finance agency, we are requesting authority to administer the PLHA with a commitment to return to the city council with recommendations for specific PLHA spending priorities. That concludes my presentation and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Ms. Dozier, want to just make an additional comment? Thank you for a good question.
Oh, I just wanted to highlight what Susan was just talking about. In terms of administration of these particular funds, we would return back to the council to really talk about the prioritization and the use of these housing funds before any funds would be allocated to a project. Just wanted to make sure that that was very clear.
Very good. I appreciate that. So that, and I'm glad you mentioned that because that, I don't want to get too deep into a philosophical conversation here. I support this action. I support SHRA applying for the SB 2 funds. And I think we are lucky to have you in this agency with all of the expertise that you have around how to help us implement a strategy around our most pressing need in this community, and that is affordable housing and homelessness. And in fact, as I said, I think at the last meeting, as evidence of where I think we need to go in many ways is to actually give you an even greater workload than what you already have. That the work that you have done around the Capital Park Hotel, every initial report here, and it's been a couple of months, has been very positive. Including, you know, business people in the downtown saying, God, it seems a little bit better, which is maybe not the ultimate test because the ultimate test is actually helping the people. But it's certainly an important part of it. So I want to say what I'm going to say, hopefully in the spirit of, whether you believe it or not, I'm a big fan, okay? The controversy over this SB 2 question, it got continued and all that, is really around this. The city now is directly getting into the housing business itself in a very positive way. Measure U, subject to, you know, more work with our city treasurer. We're going to let up to $100 million housing bond, affordable housing bond, over two years. You mentioned the Mental Health Services Act and No Place Like Home, which I'm very familiar with. And the fact that all that actually goes through the county and the city really doesn't touch it in any way the way that law was written. And I suppose I can blame myself for that if I want to, if I want to be critical. What I think is in the best interest of the city here is to have a process, and this is process-y stuff, but it's really important, I think, a process by which our city's new economic development department and our new housing leadership, Danielle Foster in the front row, our housing leadership is working arm-in-arm with our housing authority, SHRA, in order to ensure that we are getting the best of, the best advice and the most dynamic set of options and products possible. Always while recognizing when it comes to the arcane world of housing finance that is the agency that has the expertise. And so what I want to see here, and we're not, and it's sort of a condition, but not really a condition. It's just the SB 2 thing sort of brings it to light, is a policy going forward by which anything that really relates to housing policy affecting the city of Sacramento, that when it's brought to the city council, it's cosponsored, if you will, by SHRA and the city's Economic Development Department. And I know there's been a little bit of confusion since these discussions have been had about, because I know Jeff Harris had a very good suggestion about maybe separating the housing authority from the city council in a more formal way in terms of how the meetings are conducted, which I think is a fine idea. But then it begs the question, well, does that mean that any housing matters that go before the housing authority don't have to be touched, if you will, by the city manager's office or cosponsored versus things that go to the city? And I don't quite, I don't know what that proper distinction to me is. Other than the public housing program itself, which is certainly an SHRA province exclusively, but anything dealing with housing finance, I think ought to be touched by both SHRA and the city's new housing department. And I actually believe that this is going to give more authority and juice to the SHRA. I do. I believe it. Because right now, it's, SHRA is already a JPA. It already has to report to both the city council and the county board of supervisors. There's a lot of, I don't know what to call confusion. I just think we could be working all, much more closely together towards the common end. And so I know that Howard, our city manager, and Howard Chandler, Michelle Dozier, have written a letter which essentially says that anything that comes before the city council on housing-related items will be, quote, cosponsored. And by the way, if you disagree on something in the end, that's okay too. Just tell us. But that doesn't completely, the letter doesn't completely answer the question because of this separation now of the housing authority versus the city. And my intent here is that with the exception of the public housing stock and the administration of the public housing program, that everything else dealing with housing, whether it's the issues we're dealing with here today on SB 2 or No Place Like Home or the next item, the multifamily guidelines, that this be brought forward together, I think we'll all be better for it. And our relationships will be that much stronger on behalf of the people. So that's long. I apologize. My colleagues, I think, know what I'm talking about here. I think the people who have been involved in this know what I'm talking about. But that's my intent as mayor, if it's supported by the majority of my colleagues. So I would ask our city manager, Ms. Dozier, to go back and look at this letter and let's, if there is going to be a dividing line, let's make sure that the majority of housing-related issues, the vast majority of, come with the cosponsorship from both the city's Economic Development Department and SHRA. And it goes both ways. It's not just SHRA's work- It's not just SHRA's work that we're asking to be checked. It's the other way around, is the city's housing trust fund work that is going to be new, that we want to be checked by SHRA as well. I think it'll be a better, a better end product for all involved.
So Mayor, Council, it was always our intent, following this letter, to come back with a plan on what that kind of delineation, if you will, looks like and what types of things will come before the housing authority board and the city council. So we absolutely will work together and bring something back.
Anybody? Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd just like to underscore the idea that we have to continue to innovate here in order to make sure that we're delivering. One of the most brutal things anybody ever does is try to build an affordable housing unit. SHRA knows it, the developers know it. The inability to deliver units during this post-redevelopment era with very little resources is what led me to call for us to create a housing staff, and I know the community development department has worked on that. We've done streamlining. We've done all sorts of things to increase housing production. I called for the same thing as part of a project that Eric Garret, Rick Jennings and I were working on, to create a catalytic affordable housing fund and to create capacity in our economic development department to help with that. I'm really happy that Danielle is now here from another jurisdiction locally to help us make sure that we're maximizing our delivery of those units. But Mayor, as you well know, my idea in proposing a catalytic affordable housing fund late last year, I was, I think last October, a year ago already, was that SB 2 funds would go into it. I think you've made a very good argument today as to why those funds should be put into the existing city housing trust fund, and so I'm willing to support that. But one of the things that's so hard, and my district feels it acutely every day, is the lack of affordable housing units. That's permanent supportive housing for the formerly homeless, that's housing for seniors that's affordable, that's missing middle housing, workforce housing. It's all of it. And whatever we do, if we keep going back to the same processes and hoping they're going to work, I think we're going to get the same result, and we're going to continue to be disappointed. I am very excited about the housing bond that the council approved conceptually in the budget, and I know that we have to leverage all of these resources. But if the development timelines continue to be three, five years from a project's inception until its eventual financing, we'll never catch up on the resources, we'll never catch up on the units. And so while I'm willing to support this today, it's a little bit cautionary, because I don't think SHRA, in the end, is going to be the agency that can deliver those things. I'm not sure the city can be the agency that can deliver them, but unless we have this greater partnership that you talked about, Mayor, I don't think that we're able to compete against the other jurisdictions who have so many more resources and equal, if not bigger, challenges to deliver for our own constituents. So I think this is worth trying, and I'm willing to support it, even though that's, this isn't necessarily the direction I would have preferred to go.
Okay. Thank you so much. Councilmember Ashby?
Mayor, you said a lot of things. Was there a motion in there from you to move this item forward?
No, it's, I'm, I'm fine with moving it forward because LaChelle has given her word. I believe her, of course. They will sequester the funds. That's fine. Just move it forward.
I was trying to figure out if I'm moving it or seconding it.
You can move it or second it. It's fine.
Okay.
Whatever you want.
I'll move the item, Mayor, and I want to thank LaChelle because I know that during the discussions at the Capitol that you actually went over and participated in the conversation to make sure that this funding would come to fruition. So it's just a good day that we have money to fight over, right? It's great when the question is, where are we going to put this money? And we have money to do some housing, and I'm confident that giving it to SHRA with the oversight of this council, as the mayor has described, in collaboration with the city manager's office and all of that, that that's going to maximize our ability. I know that you, LaChelle, know how to take money like this and link it to other funding and then bring us back more money than we started with. So I'm glad this will land in your lap, and I am also in support of the direction that Councilmember Harris and council and the mayor have articulated today. I think that that is a win-win for us, and I'm looking forward to us, too, building the coffers, as you, Councilmember Hanson, led during the budget discussion, so that we can build that housing trust fund and whatever other funding sources we can put together to try to start. He's right, we'll never, you know, catch up at this rate, so we have to do everything we can to maximize every dollar. I'm confident that putting this money in the hands of SHRA, which is an entire agency full of housing professionals, is the right thing to do. And thank you for advocating us to this point.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Geta, Vice Mayor Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo the comments by Councilmember Hanson about a little bit of cautionary support here. And, and my concern also is on the speedy delivery of more housing. And so I'm willing to be supportive of any opportunity that we can to move whatever we need to be aggressive. I mean, I already am hearing, I spent this last weekend and last week with affordable housing experts from across the state and many who work in, in, in our greater Sacramento region, and the fact is, is the, the rest of the state is competing aggressively for those state dollars. And so I think what I'd like to see come out of this, whether it's this partnership, is how do we move faster? San Juan Motel is a good example. I don't want to be caught up in a situation where a project like that, that the community's been asking for to be developed for over a decade, that is, in a multi-jurisdiction, not just SHRA, not just county, not just city, gets delayed because of, because of process. So whatever the tool that needs to happen to move things faster, that's, I think that's what the end goal is. But I, but I am concerned that by the city distancing itself, I think in, in collecting the SB 2 dollars, that that could be a risk. So I, anything we can do to speed the process of, of being more competitive, to getting projects out faster, is something that, that I'm willing to support. So I'll support this item here. And that leads to the, the item in the next, and item 15, where we had some concerns about, you know, who can, who can hold the Tefra hearings. Now, I think that issue's been now resolved, but again, it's one of those things where how are we most nimble and speedy so we can execute as much housing construction? Had a great meeting with Councilmember Chenier today and our new staff in economic development and planning about how do we move faster on the Stockton Boulevard specific plan? Well, that team would, if, if they do all the great work that they do and we don't get this right, we'll do, we'll, we'll lay the groundwork for execution of rebuilding Stockton Boulevard, but, but not moving quickly on the housing piece, it's all for naught. So again, that is, that is my point there, so I'm, I'm going to support the item here. But again, my concern is moving quickly on housing production.
Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I just wanted to articulate a little bit about why I wanted to sit as a separate housing authority and sort of separate these housing issues from our general city council work. These issues are complex. There's a lot to it. The work that SHRA does is amazingly complex. You know, financing affordable projects is not easy, dealing with HUD funds, all of the above requires a tremendous effort. These issues are that complex that I would prefer to hear them as a, as a separate housing authority, so that we can invest the time in them. I've felt over the last few years that every once in a while, SHRA gets on our agenda at city council and gets short shrift on their presentation and on deliberations because we have a lot of business to conduct as a city council, and some of our agendas get very packed. So that was the idea, and, and I would like still to go there, and I believe that we're moving in that direction. The idea of cosponsorship is also a very good one. We have a very strong economic development department now, thank you, Mr. City Manager, especially for a recent hire that I'm very happy about. But it's good to have eyes on all these, all of these issues and developing new funding sources, the SB 2 money. These are great things, but I think we should have all hands on deck in terms of how we decide to move forward with those funds. That being said, I'm definitely in support of this item, and I do want to point out this, that SHRA, your forte is leveraging funds. And given these SB 2 monies, I believe that you will find a way, hopefully double or more, but I have trust that you will work in that regard, and I, and I thank you for those efforts. Because, you know, the $2 million that we're talking about is not going to build much. $4 million builds a lot more, and we do have an eye towards the future of getting a lot more affordable units in the city of Sacramento. And I don't think that we will be able to do that without SHRA, you know, sort of directing the way forward. So thank you for all that you do.
I just want to make one last comment in response to Councilmember Geta and Hanson's expressed frustration, not SHRA's fault, just what's happening in the state of California around the cost and the time it takes to build affordable housing, because we're obviously fallen way behind. And so among many ideas, I intend to bring before the city council, I hope before the end of the year, an idea which says the following: 30% of all of our public housing dollars from either the city, SHRA, the state government, or the federal government, need to be used on affordable housing requiring no more than $100,000 total public subsidy, and that we identify various forms of efficiency housing, container units, tiny homes, cabin communities, you name it, as a way to create what I think might be a Silicon Valley moment around efficiency housing. Because one of the problems here is that we collectively know one prototype, and we invest our public dollars in one prototype. Now, it's fine housing. Look at any project that Mercy Housing does, for example. It's great housing. Look at anything you do. It's great housing. But we cannot meet the need at $500,000, $300,000, $400,000, $500,000, $600,000 per unit and the time it takes. And this efficiency housing movement is nascent. Everybody's got a great idea, but there's no market that's been established. I want to put some of our new resources into establishing, into igniting a market and see if we might bring to vol, bring to volume some of these new ideas. We have to do this. Otherwise, we accept that it's going to take three to five years to build the next project at, at great expense while our homeless problem continues to grow. Yes, you think it's a great idea.
I just wanted to say, as part of our workshop, it was an educational forum, I wanted to clarify that the thing with the, the gap financing that we're talking about is we come in first. So we are, the, we, the, the local funds come in first, and then our development partners go to the state to compete.
We know.
Okay. As a community, when we talk about how long it takes.
I'm not laying this, understand, I'm not laying this at your doorstep.
No, I know. I just wanted to make sure that it wins.
I'm saying this is, this is, this is our collective problem here. We're not keeping up, and we're not getting ahead. And everyone's talking about tiny homes, efficiency homes, cargo, cargo units, Jeff Harris brings a prototype to Sacramento, Ron Verlocas, others are working on this stuff, the realtors are interested, everyone's interested in this, and nothing's really happening to scale. Maybe we need to incentivize creating some new industries here in town that are going to help solve our problem. That's all I'm saying. And you guys know, you guys with, with some resources probably know how to do that better than anyone. Yep?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to add to that, too. I mean, there's one thing, looking at different product types. Manufactured housing's been around for a long time.
Manufactured housing.
Happen to know a little bit about that. But there's a bigger piece that I, I hope that you would engage and that also the Law and Legislation Committee should look at its platform when we redo it, reauthorize it for next year, and that is the monitoring fees that are charged to the nonprofit housing community, and also the multiple, sometimes environmental reviews. The, the reason the costs sometimes go up on this is that we have multiple agencies billing a project for the same work. Three agencies will bill for monitoring fees, you know, to make sure that the financing is right. Well, it's, it's the same, it's the same issue, information you're looking at, the same books. The, the, say again? Oh, yeah, exactly. So then the, you also have sometimes environmental review. It's the same environmental review, but for multiple agencies. And some of that is relief at the state level, or to at least give the ability for someone to decide who's going to be responsible for that piece to reduce the overhead. So I would hope that as part of whatever we look at these new proposals, we also look at the current system of delivering this, our, our current products, because that can be improved as well.
Very good. All right. This item has been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain. Thank you. Let's move to the next item.
Thank you. I am still Susan Vizi, program manager in the Development Department at SHRA. Today, we are requesting your approval of the multifamily lending and mortgage revenue bond policies. These policies were last adopted in 2009, and given some changes in the affordable housing lending environment, including loss of redevelopment and tightening of home program regulations, we believe it is time to approve an updated version. The purpose of these lending policies is to provide our development partners with a clear understanding of SHRA's underwriting standards. Such clarity is critical for developers who often invest thousands of dollars to put an affordable housing deal together before the first sticks go into the ground. The policies also provide a roadmap for SHRA staff tasked with assessing project feasibility. For your awareness, we began the process of updating these policies in early 2017 and have held four stakeholder-specific workshops, two workshops in front of the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, and workshops in front of the County Board of Supervisors and the city council. We produced three public comment drafts, and the final version in front of you this evening incorporates feedback from a multitude of partners, including city council, city and county staff, board of supervisors, the Sacramento Housing Alliance, and affordable housing developers such as Jamboree, Mutual, and USA Properties. Attachment 2 to your staff report lays out some of the key changes. We are recommending a change in funding priorities to move new production above recapitalization of existing affordable housing. With the changes in inclusionary program, in the inclusionary zoning programs, we have removed inclusionary housing as its own category. Preservation, specifically the need to fund the acquisition and rehabilitation of affordable housing that would convert to market rate without government subsidy, remains the number one priority. An example of this would be Sutter Place, which had an expiring HUD subsidy contract that the owner was not willing to renew and was sold to an affordable housing developer to rehab and ensure long-term continued affordability. We have reduced our monitoring fee for issuing mortgage revenue bonds to bring SHRA's fee more in line with other local government bond issuers within the state. I'm going to go ahead and put, because it sounds like there may be some questions on this. Is it okay to, do you have the overhead? I've never used this before, so I'm just going to...
Put it up.
Up. I'll face up. Okay. Great. Thank you. So just in case there are questions we have, this is the results of a, it's kind of... Okay. Sorry. This is the result of the survey that we did of the 10 major bond issuers within the state of California and their issuance fees and monitoring fees that we conducted before recommending the fee structure that we landed on. So continuing, and for that fee, just again, that's how we fund our underwriting and compliance team, our monitoring team, and our construction oversight and our various admin functions. As a reminder, SHRA does not receive any general funds to operate as a local housing finance agency. We also have compliance monitoring staff who go out on-site every year, touch the properties to make sure that the physical health of the property is being maintained as well as all of the compliance and eligibility screening is being done within federal and state regulations. Continuing on our, our list of changes, we will begin requiring 5% of units within a development to be targeted to extremely low-income households. Other significant changes include the adoption of an affirmative marketing policy and requiring market, properties to be 100% smoke-free. We have included some clarifying language regarding Cal... We have included some clarifying language regarding Calhfa's ability to issue bonds in our jurisdiction. As a state entity, they do not need a local government hearing to issue bonds. Our policies do outline and continue from the 2009 version the steps that are required for other issuers that do require a city or county housing authority to issue a TFR hearing. Staff also proposed language designed to ensure an unbiased process during underwriting. We indicate that developers should work with SHRA staff to resolve differences prior to contacting members of SHRA's governing bodies. We hope that the revisions that we have made since our last workshop here have addressed your concerns. We have responded to written comments from the Sacramento Housing Alliance and met with their Executive Director and Board Chair to further flesh out changes to better support our mutual goal of developing affordable housing and to ensure clarity in the lending policies. SHRA staff also responded to the comments made by city staff and included language as staff requested regarding gentrification and lowering barriers to people exiting homelessness. This has been a long journey involving many voices, all of whom share the common goal of maximizing SHRA's impact despite limited resources. Staff believe the document you have in front of you this eve, excuse me, today, will benefit our partners and our community. And we would appreciate your support. And of course, we are available to address any questions you may have.
Okay. We do have some members up on this, we do have some public testimony on this, too. Yes, go ahead. Yes, please.
I have two speakers on this item. The first is Parker Evans and then Noah Painter.
Good afternoon, Mayor Councilmembers. My name is Parker Evans. I'm a Housing Development Project Manager at Mutual Housing California. As you know, Mutual's a nonprofit, nonprofit, we develop, own, operate permanent affordable housing in Sacramento. 20-plus properties, over 1,100 units, a significant proportion of which is within city limits. Mutual Housing California is very, we're grateful for the opportunity to participate in the process of reviewing these multifamily lending guidelines. And we're here to support the updates to the SHRA lending policies, in particular, the reduction in the ongoing monitoring fees, which will bring the fees more in line with the competitors around the state. As you know, state money for affordable housing is more competitive than it's ever been. The 4% tax credit used to be non-competitive, it will shortly go competitive. The MHP program that the state put out, huge stack of money, the first round was oversubscribed six to one. I believe Councilmember Hanson described it as a brutal process, and he's not wrong. It's more competitive than it's ever been. And reducing these fees will help Sacramento projects compete statewide for these very competitive pots of money. Not only will they help us compete, but they'll help us serve deeper levels of affordability as well. It'll strengthen projects like Lavender Courtyard, which will provide 55 units of affordable LGBT-friendly housing for our most vulnerable senior population in Midtown. And ultimately, the fee reduction will help to make Sacramento affordable housing stronger and longer lasting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Noah Painter.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name's Noah Painter, I'm a partner with KMP Strategies. Our firm represents several affordable housing developers and public agencies, assisting them with project-level financial analysis and identifying state and local gap financing opportunities. Most of our clients primarily focus their development activity within the Sacramento region. We have a few items that we want to highlight as they relate to SHRA's proposed revisions to the multifamily lending guidelines and mortgage revenue bond policies. First, we want to thank SHRA staff for their diligence and hard work tackling a major revision like this. No small undertaking. We actively participated in SHRA's early outreach, that was almost a year and a half ago. We can all agree that developing affordable housing, specifically maneuvering the tax credit and bond processes, is extremely complex. Many of these projects take at minimum two years to develop, Mayor, as you've highlighted, before construction can start. With the end of the redevelopment, and if your project needs local gap financing, that timeline likely is on the low end. The latest housing element update identified the city of Sacramento since 2014 has produced about 4,097 units of what's deemed affordable housing. Of that, 346 of those units were produced by tools SHRA administers, such as local housing trust funds and the state and tax credit bond programs. We believe that the inclusion of allowing local projects to pursue Calhfa's financing, which is approximately $100 million per year for the next five years, is a good step forward. We're concerned that SHRA is proposing to make it more challenging to work with other issuers such as CSCDA or CMFA, that the current proposed language is subjective and does not clearly define the review process for working with outside issuers. Additionally, the notion of paying both SHRA and a separate issuer fee to the other issuer will require more local subsidy to develop affordable housing units. Our goal is to highlight some of the proposed changes in SHRA's lending guidelines that may have significant unforeseen circumstances and consequences. Affordable housing developers are like any other business. If we make it harder and more cumbersome for them to build new housing units, they will focus their efforts elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Noah. Okay, let's turn it over to the City Council, and beginning with Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. And a couple of things I want to go over, but I have some questions. You'll excuse me, this is a complicated issue, but one of the things that, we've seen this set of guidelines go back and forth for a long period of time. So, there are a lot of different issues that have been vetted and tried to be resolved and maybe mostly resolved. But maybe I'd like to, rather than ask you, I'd like to ask our staff a question, and I don't know if it's Mike Jasso or Danielle. Maybe while they're coming up, I'd like to say, and I said this a little bit earlier, the paucity of construction of new affordable units is very distressing to me, to my constituents. It's the issue that comes up the most around homelessness, affordable housing. And I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can. And from the city standpoint, we waived fees on all affordable housing projects, city fees that we had within our control, because we wanted to see construction go. And so, Michael or Danielle, I understand that here SHRA is proposing a 4% fee on all affordable housing loans to help fund the agency. Is that right?
So, I would defer to the agency specifically to answer that question as to what the proposal is.
Well, LaShelle, Christine, is that right? You're proposing 4% annual fee, or 4% loan amount, sorry?
Are you talking about the interest rate we charge?
Yeah, the interest rate.
Up to four, when we make a loan, when the City Council approves, like a housing trust fund loan or home loan, we charge anywhere from 0% to 4% interest. Those are usually driven by the developer because they have to show an interest rate on the loan that we're making often, so that they don't incur tax issues? Is that what you're speaking of?
Well, yeah, I'm trying to figure out if that amount of, when I read the guidelines, it looked like 4% flat was the amount, rather than 0 to 4. But one of the things I was looking for is for the agency to begin to model doing some of the things the city's done to reduce fees on projects. Is it, is it 0 to 4?
So, are, we charge, we've reduced both our annual fees for both bonds, issuance and for loans. Both, they're being reduced in these policies right now with a cap of $15,000 annually at the most for loans and $25,000 for bonds. But almost our projects don't even go that high. But when we did our study that Susan put up on the overhead, we really looked at all the other top 10 issuers in the state and saw what they did and did, and tried to take the best practices and make ours at least as competitive, not much less expensive than at the other issuers.
I think that the issue of the interest is when we do get loan repayments, if there's interest, that becomes program income. And all program income goes back into the affordable, whether if it's home funds, it goes back into home funds, housing trust funds. Those are not administrative fees, those are actually loan repayments, which then we re-loan to other housing developers.
Okay. And Danielle and Michael, is that pretty consistent, 0 to 4%? Is that the number as we work on this? And it's been a couple of busy weeks, so I apologize, I didn't get to ask staff this particular question in advance.
So, I'll defer to Danielle in a sec, Danielle in a second with respect to what's the norm in the area. Certainly, an interest rate is not uncommon, and the fact that that would be replenished into kind of the resources on an ongoing basis, as Susan has spoke, the program income is not uncommon. As to where it fits in the competitive landscape of Northern California, California, I would defer to both the agency and Danielle.
Is 4% in that mean? Because a lot of times when we look at loans like this, we're in 0 to 3, and so 4 struck me as a little bit high.
I think typically, it's probably 3% is the average that I've seen on a 55-year residual receipt-type loan.
Okay.
If I could just add, oftentimes, we are at 0%, but we defer those. We can defer a permanent supportive housing development fee referral for like 55 years. So, oftentimes, you're seeing, they're really not paying that interest on an annual basis.
Okay. And that's part of the deal you work out with each developer? And it also depends on the situation of the capital that comes in, probably. One of the things, too, here that struck me is it looked like the current proposal doesn't allow outside agencies to write bonds without paying the agency for the fee. Is that correct?
It, we are just recouping our cost for holding the TFR hearing, so we have to, when they want to use another issuer, we also look at their project, because you, as the City Council, have to hold what's called, actually, as a housing authority, have to hold the TFR hearing, it's a public hearing. So, we use those funds to reimburse staff time for looking at that project and presenting it to you, so you can hold that public hearing.
But what if we are not the agency performing the TFR hearing?
TFRs have been here. The only other agency that can hold TFRs in the state of California is Califaca. Otherwise, the City Council, the Board of Supervisors, whoever the housing authority body for that jurisdiction has to hold the TFR.
In the cost of that hearing, I believe in here, it's a certain number of basis points that you're asking for, for reimbursement. It seems like, given the already-existing costs for issuing those bonds, that that basis point, I was trying to find it here while you were talking, Christine, what's the recommendation, again? I have like a 20-page document here.
We charge 0.25% or 25 basis points for issuing. We would not be, in what you're talking about, another issuer would be issuing, so we wouldn't be issuing, but we would charge that fee just to bring forward the staff report before you with the public hearing, so that you would know that you're holding the public hearing on behalf of another issuer.
So, 25 basis points to hold the TFR hearing? Which every time I've been here is sort of a pro forma...
Underwrite the deal.
But if the other agency is issuing the bonds, why would we underwrite the deal?
To ensure they meet our standards.
Right, to make sure that you are well-versed, when we bring a project before you, you'll know how many units, if there's enough operating dollars to carry the project to fruition, are the construction costs adequate? Because you are the public agency holding that Tax Credit Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing. It's just to provide that information to you. And it's just a one-time fee, there's no ongoing fees that are associated if we're not the issuer.
And Michael and Danielle, is 25 basis points sort of the industry standard for a TFR hearing for another entity? We're putting you on the spot because we just hired you and we want to show how awesome you are.
I think different agencies have different fees around that. Often, it's the fee for the hearing itself. That's historically what I've seen around TFR hearings, it's more around the act of the hearing. I think, in this case, it's unique as to whether or not the city is putting funds in related to the underwriting.
If we're not putting any local funds in it, we're just having the consent item of the TFR hearing come forward, would we be underwriting that? Or is it the agency issuing the bonds doing the underwriting?
A part of what we're doing is taking a look at any type of affordable housing project that is coming into our jurisdiction to make sure it meets our standards. For instance, if they have the right social service components, if the underwriting is really going to last for the entire term of the affordable housing, if the property management firm is acceptable, all of those things that we require to make sure that when we bring affordable housing into a community, at any point in any given time, that we can say that this was a good project. And that's what we owe to our community. And the underwriting and everything we do make sure that all of those things are done. So, it's not just a consent item, it is looking at that project, even if someone else is the issuer, to make sure it has a long-term viability as affordable housing.
But again, even if we're not putting in any local money and we're simply the conduit, that is your...
Well, you, as that body, is ensuring that this affordable housing is going to meet the standards that you have set, whether you're, we are the issuer or they are the issuer.
Just to keep moving, because I have a few other questions. One of the things that the guidelines say is that residual receipt loans are only going to be allowed when they're required by state law. But as I understand it, that's the preferred delivery, the preferred financing mechanism for projects. Is there a reason why we only allow it when state law requires it versus as a standard?
Residual receipts loans do require, well, first of all, they create uncertainty. But second of all, there is a significant administrative burden on behalf, on the part of both the owner and manager of the, managing, you know, general partner and SHRA servicing to review each year. And so, it's just, it's a, it's a much more, it's a much less administratively burdensome process to identify what the, than identifying what the waterfall is and divvying up who gets what. So, with all the HCD money that's coming in, HCD operates on a residual receipts basis, but in general, we've found with our servicing and our experience over the years, that there's a, that there's an administrative burden that doesn't really result in much, because a lot of times, there is no repayment, because we are doing such deep targeting that there is, you know, we're not being paid at all. And so, you're imposing both a financial statement submission burden on the part of the owner, as well as on staff, on loan servicing staff, who are having to essentially, you know, go through the accounting. It's an accounting exercise. I don't think it would...
I've got a couple more questions, Mayor, and then I'll, you know, I hear you breathing.
It's something that I try to do most...
I appreciate that.
Minutes of the day.
As he gets closer to the microphone, my time is becoming shorter.
Keep me alive, I don't know.
The next thing I just had a question about is that all projects over 100 units are required to have full-time security versus when SPD might indicate that that's warranted? Is that a necessary requirement for all complexes, like a 100-unit senior complex? I'm trying to understand why that's a requirement versus a recommendation in cooperation with SPD.
We require, based on the size of the property, the security, our security requirements do go up. And we want, what we want to do is make sure, well, first of all, we have things like security equipment, security cameras that are required. But we do want to make sure that when we are sizing the loan and we are, when we are underwriting, that there are sufficient resources in the operating budget to handle security-related issues. So, we do work with the developers, depending on the location, depending on the population, depending on the layout of the property. But we do, you know, we have, again, having the benefit of working with the same construction staff who oversees our public housing inventory, there's a lot of, and the fact that we monitor and are very close to all of our other properties.
But again, why isn't it on a case-by-case basis, given the situation, rather than a flat requirement?
Well, we, again, we're trying to provide the guidelines for everyone so that they know the rules coming in and, you know, if you want to speak to that, yeah.
I could say, if there was a case where we didn't think, we're not, this is not full-time security, it might be patrol, like you would, you know, join with the P-bid or whatever, we'd be doing patrol. But if there was a case that it didn't need it, then we would come forward to you, it's part of our staff report, and say, we've determined this does not need security patrols, for example.
And we frequently, when we bring a project forward, if there is an exception to the policies that you all have adopted, we just call those out.
The issuance piece for monitoring, I guess, we're proposing, and I saw it on your chart today, 12.5 basis points, which includes monitoring. Does that also include for issuances we don't do but are in our SHRA jurisdiction? No?
We do not charge an annual monitoring fee for projects we do not issue for.
Okay. Does that include those other agencies that we talked about earlier, that we might perform a TFR hearing for, but they're actually doing the issuance?
That's correct.
And is there a reason why it shouldn't be a lower amount, or that shouldn't be capped to something more realistic, like five basis points? Or an annual fee that's predictable? Because what it seems like here is there's an ongoing annual fee that just adds to the total cost and the operations cost, and as somebody said, adds to the ongoing subsidy required.
We can put this chart up again, and you can see where we're SHRA, where we were, and you can see where... We can put this chart up again and you can see where, where SHRA, where we were and you can see where we've, we've gone in terms of, that's, that's really where we, where we landed. So we have reduced our annual administrative burden. I think our, in terms of the, of the monitoring costs, we've been in close coordination, both with like the Sacramento Housing Alliance. In fact, we had proposed a $25,000 maximum for all of our, you know, across the board. And SHA recussed that we lower our maximum to $15,000 for loan-only deals, which we have incorporated in this. And so we believe, based on the research that we have done, based on the work, based on the expectations, you know, we get calls regularly. I'm, I also oversee our portfolio management team in addition to our underwriting team. And, you know, we're very close to the properties that we finance on your behalf. And so when there are complaints, we have staff who are very knowledgeable, who the management agents are, who the resident services providers are. We're addressing tenant issues, management issues on a weekly basis. And, and that's part of how we're able to do such, I think, a, a good job of monitoring and making sure that our properties are, are well-managed. And the communities are really that, communities. We are underwriting for 55 years to provide housing that is something we can all be proud of for 55 years, not just at the deal point at closing.
And again, maybe I have the wrong document, but it still says 25,000 is the not to, is the not-to-exceed amount for the annual administration.
You might be looking in the bond section. So there's a, the other section is in the loan section.
I guess overall, given the challenges that I see with our affordable housing program, I, I would like to see the agency embrace the cost-cutting strategies that we've had to do to ensure that we can get affordable housing through. And you can tell, I certainly described the process as brutal. I've been on the receiving end of trying to help deliver projects. And Christine, you, LaShelle, and I have spent a lot of time looking at numbers, working on projects, some of them you mentioned. And many of them thus far have not come to fruition. We have built almost no affordable housing units that weren't former redevelopment units, like the 700 block, or didn't get a little bit of city financing available, like the Bellevue. And so my real interest here is whether or not the, the document before us reduces the brutality of how hard it is to get housing built, affordable housing built. And I, I don't see the kind of leaning in that I would like to see in the guidelines to make sure that we're, we're moving stuff through the pipeline as quickly and efficiently as possible. So one of the things I'd like to do is I'd like to have my colleagues consider some amendments to these that do address the questions I raised. And I'll pass these out because I, I don't think at this point, this is something, and, and there's a lot of nuance here. This is complex. We've seen it and we only get little bits of time to the point that Mr. Harris raised earlier. Those are for there. But, but I do think that this is a resolution and we need to make sure that we are resolved to see this be as aggressive and assertive as possible. That affordable housing, and this isn't a commentary so much on our agency, but if you look here, for a lot of local jurisdictions, it's seen as a way to build their base budget, to pull in revenues. But we want to be as nimble as possible here and get as many units built. If these fees are a burden, and I'm hearing from some folks that they are, then we need to see how we can be even more nimble at delivering this. If we are performing a Tefra hearing and that's all we're doing, I don't understand why it's 25 basis points. I really don't. I think that's an extraordinary amount of loan proceeds for what has always been a pro forma hearing, especially because the city doesn't carry that risk. It's the issuing agency that does, and they should be doing that. So I, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt these with the changes that I've passed out to my colleagues. And I guess we'll have a conversation.
Very good. I'm going to go immediately to Councilmember Ashby since I have my notes across the dais here.
Did you want me to wait for you? You want to, okay. All right, well, thank you. So I, obviously I haven't seen this package that my colleague just handed me, but I'm actually prepared to adopt the proposal that you brought forward today. And there's probably some good in here too, that maybe we could review and ask to come back and make modifications. But, you know, I'm the beneficiary of 11 low-income inclusionary apartment complexes that were put together with a similar funding model that serve thousands of low-income families in my district. And I would agree that we can't wait. And I know that developers repeatedly tell us that they want us to do as much as we can to reduce fees. So I appreciate that while there may be more that we could do, this actually does lower fees. And in addition to what, as Councilmember Hanson stated, we've already done in the city, it should help us start to create that incentive base. So I'd actually like to make a motion that we move staff's recommendation today. But I'd be happy to also include that we come back if there are future recommendations from the items that Councilmember Hanson brought forward for us to consider. But thank you for your great work. I appreciate it. Look forward to seeing more of the units come forward.
Okay, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have a couple of questions for you at SHRA. You know, when you look at the comparison of, say, just monitoring fees from CalHFA, CMFA, CDC, CSCDA, it seems at first glance that your monitoring fees are much higher. And one thing in particular, they're not tied to the remaining and outstanding bond balance, but if just a flat fee, I take it over, over the life of the bond. So a developer could certainly look at that and say, well, that seems high. You, you talked about using best practices to arrive at the changes that you brought here, and I see that you've lowered your, your fees. I guess my question is, how did you arrive at the amount you arrived at? Because it still does seem, you know, if you compare to the other agencies, rather high. You know, some of them are five basis points, but with a minimum annual fee, you don't have a minimum annual fee. You have a not-to-exceed amount. But it's 12 and 1/2 basis points down from 15, correct, or from 25?
They're down. So the.
So you reduced it from 25 basis points to 12?
That's what it was when we did our study. I think what Susan's showing you there, it was 15 basis points. But now in our policies, it's down to 12.5, which is what.
I would say that the, the, the amount of work that SHRA puts in to monitoring is significantly higher than.
Far exceeds what those other agencies.
And we've just found that our, again, our.
One of the things that SHRA does as opposed to some of those other issuers is that we actually go out on-site and we review the files or review the physical condition of the building. We're doing that every year. In addition to going out every year, if there is any problem that comes up, so if there are complaints from neighboring properties, if there's complaints from the people who live there, that they're not being charged the right amount, any types of complaints, we in turn go out and investigate. If there's a serious problem, then we'll go out several times and reinvestigate to make sure that those things are corrected. So the level of monitoring that we put in is, is significantly higher than what you may see with some of the other issuers, who never go out to the site, who never go and do any type of onsite review. It may all be done via a computer where information is just sent in. So they don't put the eyes and ears, nor do they deal with and address those problems that come up.
If I could just, just add though, as well, because they are paying this fee and because we're doing, we're paying our staff to do all these inspections, they are exempt from the city's rental inspection program. So if we were not to be doing this or charging those fees, then I would just have to pay the city's rental inspection program fee.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. One other thing that I brought up during your workshop here and had received complaints from a developer about the language that you had previously had about people not contacting their council member, you know, while they were engaged with SHRA. And I see that you've changed the language, but I'm, I'm still a little concerned about it. Why, what's the thought process behind, where is it here? It's number six, that once a full application's been submitted, the applicant should work with SHRA staff to resolve issues prior to contacting members of the governing bodies. Can you just give me the thought process behind that? I mean, why did you feel necessary to include that?
Well, we felt it was necessary to include that because there are many things that we can actually work out and resolve without them contacting the council member's office. Now, of course, that's their right to do and, you know, we're not trying to discourage. But what we're saying is, many times there's confusion about the standards. There is inaccurate information. There's all kinds of different things that go on, and we want the opportunity to try and work out those issues so that they are resolved. So that is our intent, is to try and resolve the issues to the extent that we can.
But so, so once a developer, as you have done in issuance of bond or a loan, there is no repercussion if they contact an elected, even if it's because of confusion? I mean, I understand that you want to work it out. That just makes sense. You, you know, you're the people with the information. You're the one dispensing the money. So of course, I would think that anybody would come to you first, but there is no repercussion with this language if, if a person chose to. Contact their council member and say, you know what? I'm not quite getting where SHRA is coming from on this loan, and so maybe you can help me, you know, interface with SHRA. Maybe we can get, you know, LaShelle and Christine to the table and work this out. I want to make sure that a developer never has a concern that they can contact their elected for help, under any circumstance, once they engage with SHRA in any kind of contractual form.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Shanir.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. First of all, I want to second Mr. Hanson's motion. I don't believe that's been done, so.
Neither, neither motion had had a second, and the second is noted on Councilmember Hanson's motion. So.
And I think Mr. Hanson has gone through like all of my little tabs on this. I just want to reiterate a couple of points. I actually, the language on, even though it says should not versus what it was, I just think, I can't think of another situation in my role as a city councilperson that were telling people not to come see me or recommending that they don't come see me about something that might be in my district. So I, I just, I wouldn't vote for this, any policies that included that. And then kind of down the line, and I think this is what Mr. Hanson has, has done, two things are important as thematically for me. One, that we reduce the costs as much as possible. Even if we're reinvesting back in the program, it still puts somewhat of a barrier in front of the original developer who's paying more costs. So I get it that the money comes back and that's a good thing, but if we're charging more upfront, it, it makes the cost of the project more expensive. And we have worked very hard, and I know our folks have taken a haircut within the city to lower fees wherever possible. So I'd like to see we, us do more of that. That's, that's the first part. The second part for me, kind of thematically, is providing as much flexibility as we can, both to the city as we're sitting as a housing authority or will be sitting as a housing authority, and to the redevelopment agency or to the housing authority as well. That flexibility is, is really important. So where you have words like in limited situations or others like that, I, I think that we can do without that. So for me, what I would like to do is, one of two things, I'm happy to support Mr. Hanson's motion with a second, which I did, to move this today. I'm also more than willing to say, these are changes that we would like to see. And I'm more than willing to have a, this on the agenda again, to have another conversation, to see if, if you all think that there are good reasons not to do this, that we come back and have that discussion. But at this point, I'd like to move it forward today with Mr. Hanson's changes.
Thank you, Councilmember Shanir. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Jay, I want to make sure I understand what your motion is, that we adopt these today and if we don't like them, after some analysis, what is the motion?
One of two things. So Mr. Hanson has made a motion to adopt these changes. Seconded that motion. So I'd like to see us vote on this today and move it forward. I would also be willing to say, let's continue the item to let LaShelle and whoever else come back and say, this is why we think we need to do these things. For example, why up to 3% and not 4%. You know, just to give rationale. My preference would be to move it forward with these changes, but I'm also willing to say we can have one more discussion about it.
Okay. And Councilmember Ashby's proposal was to move the staff recommendation and come back and talk about these at a later date. I just received these. I don't know if I support this or not, Steve. I just got it a few minutes ago. We've been in conversation. My preference would be to table this whole thing. We haven't had a change in these policies in 10 years. It doesn't sound like there's a lot of time sensitivity to it. But you have raised some issues. I like to look at those issues, discuss them with SHRA, understand where you're coming from. So if you're not willing to table this for a later date, I'm going to have to go along with Councilmember Ashby's suggestion that we adopt what's, what's been presented and investigate this at a future date.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Councilmember.
I called Steve out, so he's.
Yeah, if you don't mind, Mr. Carr, maybe I can respond after our colleagues have spoken.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr.
Well, in that case, I second, second the motion from Councilmember Ashby.
There is a substitute motion on the table, and there's been a second to that substitute motion. And so we'll, we have that on the table at the moment, which is to pass the staff recommendation with also a recommendation to review the amendments. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Well, it didn't appear that the substitute motion is going to pass. And so I think Councilman Carr's recommendation was to carry this item over. I, I think I too would like to see Steve's changes and understand them. You know, I have a lot of experience with development. I understand costs. 25 basis points is a quarter of 1% for, you know, the amount of work that's necessary to review and all of the compliance stuff that's, you know, all the compliance issues related to, you know, when state and federal and different types of subsidies and, and contributions are, are put together. And it's one of the reasons why developers, private sector developers typically don't like to do projects, because there's so much paperwork when you get these subsidies. And that time costs money to the private sector developer as well as, I'm sure, to the agency staff. And I don't see that as being a, excuse me, a cumbersome fee. But I do want to give my colleague, Mr. Hanson, respect to understand his issues and, and some time. It's not going to happen tonight. But also, one of the, the concerns I heard, and I want to be clear that I understand it, and that is what Councilman Harris had brought up, was that there was some concern about whether applicants, developers were allowed to communicate with the council office. And previously, that had been precluded. Is that what I understand? And so, okay, and it's not precluded going forward, okay? Because I think it's very important that, you know, the council should have an opportunity to talk, you know, with the, with the applicant or the developer, so.
Very good. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Did you want to go?
No, go ahead.
You sure?
All right, perfect. Well, go ahead and have a, we'll see the, we'll catch you up in a minute here.
D6 is open for you again.
That's right, exactly. So a couple of things here. First, just to catch up, members, there was a motion made by Councilmember Hanson to amend the, to pass a motion with the changes submitted to the clerk here. It was seconded by Councilmember Shanir. Councilmember Ashby made a substitute motion to pass the staff recommendation and to come, and to move the staff recommendation and bring back a response to the items suggested by Councilmember Hanson. It was seconded by Councilmember Carr. The standing motion right now is the substitute motion. Now, I'll, I'll go ahead and give my comments here and questions first. First, again, I think this.
I, I have a question.
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you. I had to be out.
There's a point of information here by the mayor.
Okay, thank you. I, I want to understand that the. I, I want to understand the, the functional difference between the motions. Because if, if Councilmember Hanson's motion passes, which is to continue this essentially...
That's incorrect. Yeah. Councilmember Hanson's motion would make the following changes submitted here to the council and the clerk. That is correct.
Which is where I think we're going to be, because there's eight of us, and I'm counting four, four.
It's a, it's a four, four...
I'm going to listen for a minute. Go ahead.
Perfect. So, I'm inclined to, to support Councilmember Hanson's motion here, and, and first vote against the substitute motion, because we've, that, that substitute motion has brought forth, has been brought forth before this council in three previous occasions. In one, we had a robust discussion, where we asked that SHRA come back. And in other situations, we've referred it so that we had a full council, because there hasn't been a majority who've, who've agreed with the staff recommendation. So, that's, and so that, in the sense, I, I don't, I don't support moving, continuing to move with the same item, because it's what we've discussed each time. I will support Councilmember Hanson's motion if the substitute fails. And I think the, what Councilmember Shanier's saying is, let's get some progress moving here. Let's pass a motion with concepts that we've been discussing. Councilmember Hanson has articulated and compiled a lot of those comments that some of us have brought upon the dais. And, and there is the staff direction here to essentially say, let's come back and, and fine-tune these, if they may. I'll start off with saying that I am concerned about the percentage cost for the monitoring fees. Now, there's a cost for us to actually make sure that we're keeping the public trust, that every project has, is meeting its financial obligations, its obligations to the residents, and it's, and it's also maintaining its quality of affordable housing. We cannot sacrifice the quality of affordable housing. But I also do believe that it sends a signal when our rates are, are publicized higher than other, than other jurisdictions.
They're, they're, this is, they're lower, actually, we have...
Well, no, no. In the zero, up to 4%.
Oh, you're talking about the...
Correct.
The loan...
Yes.
Interest rate.
That is correct, yeah. Well, and, and you should probably, do we, can we get them a copy?
That's not our fee. That's not a fee.
Yeah, okay, good. So, and even though it does say in the staff report, up to 4%, I mean, that gives us, that gives us a window. I think that the suggestion here is to, is to try to maintain those. Now, what, one of the, the concerns I continue to have, again, and this is more of a, an issue on, of our overall statewide, how we, how we fund affordable housing project, is we have a lot of different entities billing a project multiple times. And if we can be part of the solution to figure out how to better streamline that, whether it's the monitoring fees, environmental review, all of the different checks and balances, then I think that we have, we can, we can actually start helping reducing the costs. I do have a question about this, the security question, and it was brought to me that, that if we're not doing the monitoring fee, then a project would fall under the rental inspection program that the city has. Do we know what the cost differential is between the, what we would charge for monitoring and the rental inspection program? What is, do we know that cost differential?
I don't know what that, I have, I have no idea what the rental inspection program costs.
Councilmember Shanier.
Last I checked, and we have some folks here, I don't know, Ryan, if you know, the rental inspection fee was like $49 to come out and do someone's house. Is that about the same? And it wasn't, and we've changed it, so it's not every year, depending on if you're a good actor or not. Is that about right?
Yeah.
Seven, yeah. Thanks, Ryan.
There's a per-unit cost for the rental housing inspection program, which is $17 or somewhere thereabouts. And then, there's a, a fee for inspection, which is $156.
Okay. And, and if you pass and do well, how, how often do you have to have the fee?
You can self-certify if you pass, and you're just audited, or subject to audit, which we audit as many as we can, up to 10% each year.
So, if you do well, it's basically a one-time cost?
Yes.
And then, you're done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
So, I, I'm sorry that, I'm sorry, LaShelle.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify. But if you are being monitored by SHRA, then you are not, you are not charged that fee. So, the property owner does not have...
No, I understand. I'm just responding to one of your folks who said, if you don't do this, you would be subject to the rental inspection. So, we're just trying to compare apples to apples here.
And that was my, my question. I wanted to know, I mean, because that, what we're trying to figure out here is what, how do we reduce the cost for the overall development of that project? And, and I think if, if, if it's that balance, I'd say, like, not requiring security and only doing it on a case-by-case basis versus 100 units, is there a reason why we've used 100 units in the past for requiring security? Or has it just been, hey, that's a, that's a, a number we picked?
Based on, you know, experience, we've been underwriting multifamily deals at SHRA for 30 years now, and also monitoring the, our portfolio on a, a yearly basis for that long as well. So, it's just, there's just a lot of embedded experience, and these, these policies were drafted. That particular item, I don't believe, was changed, and that's consistent with what, what we've been requiring for many years.
And see, I, I'm more inclined to support the case-by-case scenario, depending on, on what the, how the project is designed, you know, the, and other factors that go into it. So, you know, so to me, I, I appreciate the flexibility that is being proposed here by Councilmember Hanson's motion. The, the last question, I wanted to make sure I confirmed here, or answer I wanted to confirm, is the, the, the changes you made would allow Cal HFA to hold a tougher hearing?
They've always been able to hold a tougher hearing. They don't require a local jurisdiction. So, the purpose of the tougher hearing is that mortgage revenue bonds, because there's a, there's a tax implication, that only qualified rental housing is eligible. And so, somebody needs to assess and then validate that they, that, that it's a public purpose, when you're agreeing to issue those bonds. We are required, the, 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 housing authorities issue bonds in our jurisdiction. Cal HFA, being a statewide agency, does not require a local government to hold any sort of public hearing. They can do that, and they do with some regularity.
Now, it was mentioned earlier during the, the presentation, that, that other agencies that will do monitoring, that we will also monitor, even though there's another lender, because we want to maintain the, the, the quality of the project, or making sure that, that there were, that we had people on-site responding to issues. But what I heard specifically was, and maybe I, I misheard wrong, is that we're trying to maintain the standards, and that's why we monitor a project.
They have federal regulatory requirements from home, from HUD. Home, I don't know if you recall, several years ago, there was quite a bit of controversy, because local jurisdictions did not have robust underwriting and monitoring standards. And so, in 2013, the home requirements really tightened in terms of their subsidy layering, in addition to their monitoring requirements. And so, I think SHRA has treated the local-generated funds, similar to the home, to make sure that, again, it's, it's not just about building, it is about building the units, but you want to make sure that the people who are living in those units are the people that you committed those resources for. So, there's eligibility screening, screening that, that we oversee. And it's very complicated to be a manager of affordable housing. And so, we want to make sure that our management agents have the ability to screen residents and to make sure that it really is genuinely people who meet the criteria that the, that we've presented to the city council. If we're, if we're going to be, you know, asking you to fund housing for people at 50% of area median income, we want to make sure those are really the people who are living there, five years from now, 10 years from now. And that's the kind of screening that we do, that, that a lot of jurisdictions. And at, at the local level, it's much more consequential, right? Because you're going to have a resident, or a management agent, or a neighbor, they're not going to call the state of California if they have an issue. They're going to call, you know, District 6, and, and, and that's what we see, and that's why we have the robust monitoring that we have.
And is there, is there another agency, I mean, is, is, is it required by the federal government that the local agency do it? Or are, are there other people doing it?
The grantee, mhm, yes, absolutely.
And are there other situations where we go out for, for a state loan, or another loan, where we're not required to be that, that monitor?
If, if HCD has their own, if, if the state has provided subsidy, they also will have, you know, some, some, you know, regulatory oversight over time. I'm not completely familiar. I don't think it's as, you know, as regular as, as our local monitoring fees. I believe our monitoring fee is actually lower than HCD's, and so, we actually do a lot more for the fee that we charge than I would believe HCD know, know.
And I, and, you know, whether they, I mean, I, I think there's questions about whether HCD should have a cap on their monitoring fee to begin with, but the, the point here, I think, is, it, it almost seems that there should be kind of an agreement, or figuring out a way of who is responsible for the overall monitoring. And, and that, again, is, is...
That's actually something that was considered at the federal level. I actually worked for the Department of Housing and Urban Development when Ben Metcalf was there, and there was a White House-level team looking at this exact issue. It is a significant issue, and they were not able to get very far, unfortunately. So, it is certainly something to consider, but not something we are really able to resolve at our level.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the, those questions. Again, I wanted to underscore the, the levels of, of costs that go through each project, and a lot of them have to deal with figuring out how to get through this, this mess here. And so, I think, I think what's been proposed here tries to get at some of those costs, and so, I'm willing to support them. I agree with Councilmember Shanier, that we should come back and bring them to see how they move forward, but, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. It's just really, I know, a very important discussion, because it's all about affordability here. So, I'm going to turn it over to, I know, Councilmember Harris has some questions, and I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Hanson, who may have a clarification here that will help us get through today. But I want to ask one question first, myself, on the substance of, of the matter. And maybe this has been covered, and I apologize that I had to step out. But it goes a little bit back to how our city housing, new housing trust fund, for example, is going to work in conjunction with multifamily financing and revenue, mortgage revenue bond policies. Because I noticed on page five of the report, that there is a recommendation about revised affordability levels, in which SHRA is recommending that 15% of a project's total units restricted to 50% of the AMI, and at least 5% of the project's total number of units restricted to 30% of the AMI. What if we decide, just hypothetically, as a city, when we discuss the implementation of our housing trust fund, that we want to, we want to focus much more on the extremely low-income level, 30% or below? Which, which, you know, is a discussion I'd like to have among the city council. So, by approving this today, are, are we going to potentially be inconsistent with what we end up deciding to do when we implement our housing trust fund?
I, I think these are, what we're setting are minimums. So, that 50%, that we, we had originally had, we fund 50% or below, and that 5% were the, the ELI, and so...
No, but I...
So, that, so, so deeper targeting is certainly eligible. You're talking about going above 50% of AMI, or going more ELI?
I'm talking about going lower.
Yes, yeah.
So, I understand that it's a minimum, but I, I know I'm going to mix up ceilings and floors, and minimums and maximums here in my head, but maybe we want to set a stronger standard for extremely low income as a mandatory requirement of our, of our multifamily financing guidelines here. In other words, I want to have the discussion for the city council. If we've got 200 million bucks in total, right? Which is maybe what we're going to have when all is said and done here. How much of that do we invest in, in, in the extremely low income? And, and so, if this is a minimum, I just want to make sure that we're, we're consistent with whatever we decide to do. Go ahead.
I think it would be a great and opportune time, if you have additional resources of that magnitude, to come forward and to really have that discussion. And then, we can actually look at, you know, what does that mean, in terms of the financials? And how many units can we get if we have the deeper level of targeting? And that makes perfect sense, if you're going to be moving towards 100 or 200 million dollars of housing finance.
So, that, okay.
And a lot of this, the HCD funds, like with the MHP program, we saw that deeper targeting really was, meaning going to 20 and 30%, was really required. So, a lot of the projects that we've brought to you have...
Okay. I would like to combine that discussion with our discussion about how to create a market around efficiency, housing, and tiny homes, too, because that's another way to meet the affordability requirement for very low-income people. Got to bring people indoors in safe, quality housing here. So, that's my, my only comment on the substance of it. Councilmember Harris, then to Councilmember Hanson for a clarification, and maybe we can wrap this up, okay? Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So, this, this discussion is robust, and I think it's been sorely needed. The problem was, this should have happened at your workshop when you came to council. And the reason it didn't is because this was buried in a deep agenda, and this is exactly an exemplary why I want to sit as a separate housing authority to dive deep into these issues. So, we missed that opportunity, and now you've come back with written guidelines that obviously, I think, deserve a deeper discussion. Councilmember Hanson brought forward some proposed changes. I find them to be very substantive in nature. And quite frankly, I pushed a policy a while back, that no substantive, substantive changes to the published item before us should move through city council and be adopted at the dais. So, process-wise, I'm really having a problem with this.
But he's going to clarify.
I understand. I understand. These are all great points that are being argued here tonight, and, and they're important ones. But I have to say that I would not vote to just take these substitutes, these changes, to what was printed, because frankly, I think that the city at large needs to see changes of this magnitude published before we vote on them. I don't like changing policy in a big way, on the fly, at the dais. I don't think it's transparent, and I don't think it's appropriate for this council to do that. So, that being said, I'm very interested to hear what Mr. Hanson might say in terms of perhaps altering his, his motion.
The floor is yours, Councilmember Hanson.
I, I'm so excited. First of all, Councilmember Harris, to be clear, our rules, and I'm looking for the specific one, apply simply to ordinances. This is not an ordinance, but an ordinance that is going to be amended at the dais, needs to have written amendments passed out, and this is not an ordinance. But I, I think the spirit of that is still important. And so, one of the things that I really think is important about this conversation is, this is one of the best conversations we've had about financing affordable housing in relation to the agency. And that does make me very happy, because a lot of times, these are buried in parts of the agenda. They get skipped over, they get delayed. We've sent you back to the grindstone several times on this one. But I think that the intent that I have, and if the substitute motion is voted down, I'd be happy to update my motion. But what I really want is, I ran to be a policymaker, I didn't run to be a rubber stamp. And I really want to make sure that these guidelines embrace the spirit and, and ultimate goal of this council, to accelerate affordable housing construction as much as possible. Sometimes, that means lower fees. It means shorter processes. It means things to do, because we have an emergency for many people who feel like they're being displaced. The county board voted down last week an emergency order on evictions. We did it in August, because we saw this crisis coming, and we got ahead of it. We don't want to continue to be behind the ball. And so, if, if the substitute motion is withdrawn or voted down, I'd be very happy to change my motion, to take the amendments I passed out, to have our SHRA staff, our city staff, Danielle and, and Mike, Mr. Jasso, to have them work, to come back with a recommendation to us, in the spirit of the mayor's comment on the last item. If, if the substitute motion is not withdrawn, or is passed, then obviously, that would become moot.
So, Councilmember, I mean, I, I think that's a good move, in the sense that it doesn't seek to get the amendments passed today, per Councilmember Harris's concerns. But Councilmember Hanson has put the policy on... But Councilmember Hanson has put the policy on the table. He said, "Let's put off approval for what, two weeks, three weeks?" So that they can be incorporated or not, depending upon the discussion. You come on back, then we got a full vote, and everyone's had time. I think that's a fair resolution of today's matter. But it's up to you. Yes? Angie, go ahead. Why don't you respond now, because you're the... Is that okay, Larry?
That's fine.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead now? Yeah.
Yeah. I have a quick question for LaShelle, or the team there, SHRA team. Is there any sense of urgency to this? We couldn't come back in two weeks, because that's Thanksgiving. I'm assuming next week is too fast. But I think we do have a meeting the week after that, so the mayor's, maybe three weeks, probably the fastest we could do it. But what is the sense of urgency on this?
Well, we have been working on this for quite some time. We started this in 2017, and we really met with a lot of stakeholders and outreach into the community.
LaShelle, can you pull that mic just a little closer? I just can't quite hear you.
No, what I was, can you hear me now?
Yep.
One of the things that I was saying is that we've been working on this since 2017, and I know that there are affordable housing developers who are very interested in these policies being approved, because they have projects that you are going to see at the beginning of December. If this is approved, it will impact exactly what their financial structure is for the deal. So...
So, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead.
It will lower their fees.
It would lower their, if we pass this now, it would lower the development fees on the projects that are planning to come beginning of December.
As opposed to three weeks? As opposed to three weeks?
I think they're coming at the same time.
They're coming, yes. They're moving through the pipeline now. They're scheduled to come on that day.
Let me ask you another question.
And in addition to that, we also, well, we staff have not had a chance to take a look at this, and we haven't had a chance to really vet this and talk to the stakeholders and the affordable housing developers and get their input on it. But, you know, that's up to the council in terms of how they want to proceed.
Okay. So, I think what I'm hearing you say is, three weeks is not enough for you to vet this and take it to the stakeholders and the, no? Okay. Well, so let me ask you another question here, because I really appreciate the mayor coming back in the room and trying to help us get to a spot where we can get five, because before he walked in, this would have just been four, and would have gone away. But I think, I think, yeah, you're right. It's still four-four. It was three or four. I think, in my mind, the right thing, how easy would it be if to make the, if you, if we gave you the direction today to pass what you brought forward, staff's recommendation, albeit a rubber stamp, I suppose? I know you didn't mean it that way, but you know. And then, you took Councilmember Hanson's suggestions. I'm sure there's some good stuff in here. I, too, it sounds to me like Jay and Eric had a chance to maybe see it before, which is great. That's perfectly within the rules. But I did, then they're much faster readers than me. But I, there's probably good stuff in here, because Councilmember Hanson works hard on this stuff. So, what would it take if we passed your recommendation today for you to then work with the council on what in here could be done and talk to the development companies or whatever, whoever you need to talk to, to bring some potential, to bring some of this back to us that might help reduce these costs as well? How long would that take?
I think that it would, if the recommendation is passed as is today, it will affect the project that is coming forward at the beginning of December.
In a positive way, because it'll lower their fees?
In a positive way. It will go down. There, in fact, there are two. There are two that are coming forward. Metro at 7th, as well as Lavender Courtyard would then receive those lower fees.
And then, could you, like, by January, come back to us and look at this then? I mean, that way, Mayor, we get to give Lavender Courtyard and the other group the lower fees in December, but we still move Councilmember Hanson's suggestions forward, so that everybody else can spend time reading them and...
If I may, if we said to the Lavender Court developers, "We need you to wait until the 15th of December," I'm sure they would be all right with that, right?
I think they can do that, as their point is...
They will miss their timeline in terms of application for tax credits.
So, I'm going to let counsel, she's a champion of this project, as am I, weigh in on that one. But here's the practical problem, civics lesson here for everyone watching. If it is a four-four vote, then nothing happens. So, the choice really is to consider Councilmember Hanson's amendments within a reasonable time and come back and approve the overall policy with some of the amendments, all the amendments, or something in between, or to not pass them at all if it turns out to be a four-to-four vote. So, I do think there, if you were to say, for example, and I, we would accommodate this calendar-wise, that three weeks is too much, but that come back next Tuesday and consider, and that's one week, in the month of November, well...
Mayor, I just, I'm trying, I understand, I really appreciate what you're trying to do, and I'm not super adamant about this, but I just don't want to lose the two projects in December.
I understand. That's what I'm saying.
And she's saying that she can't vet this through the appropriate process. She needs to take it through that quickly. So, I, I mean, I think my substitute motion to pass staff's recommendation with a heavy request to come back, maybe even we could give a time certain, like, no later than the beginning of January, after you've vetted it, to look at these other changes, is important. And I also want to say, I completely agree with what Steve and Jeff both said, which is, we wouldn't be here if you guys weren't always buried on the bottom of agenda. So, I appreciate that acknowledgement around the board, and hopefully, these other changes that Howard and his staff and Jeff have recommended will help us not be in this situation again. But I think my substitute motion stands, because I want to protect the two projects coming forward in December, and because I want to give you ample time. I don't want to crunch you to where you don't get a chance to work with the groups that you need to work with. But I would suggest, don't push it beyond January. So, my second stance, can I?
First of all, I...
I'm sorry, Councilmember Carr, can I keep my second from you?
Go ahead, Larry.
Let me ask you a question, LaShelle. Just a quick scan of these, I just got this, well, hours ago now, this, these changes. But it looks like all of them tend to lower cost, security cost, borrowing cost, et cetera. If we adopted the recommendation tonight and came back later and adopted these policies, would that lower the cost of the projects that are in the pipeline now?
It's hard for me to say, because I'm not sure exactly which costs are in this, what's in this document. I haven't seen the document, so I really couldn't say exactly what it is. Now, I would obviously be looking at to see, is there some way we can make some of it retroactive, so that they get the benefit of that? But because I just haven't reviewed it, I just can't really say with certainty that that is the case.
Okay. Well, I will stay with the substitute motion. Where's Rick Jennings when we need him?
Where's Rick Jennings? So, I'm going to make, can we bring this to a conclusion here, rather than go back and forth? Let's do, thank you. Let's, I just want to, I just want to see if I can kind of bring it together. First of all, there's nothing that can't wait a week. Jeff Harris is correct. We should not be considering amendments on the fly. And respectfully, Councilmember Ashby, who's trying as well to try to fix all this, I don't think we should be passing a policy if it's not a complete policy. I think that as well. So, we have to be reasonable here. Excuse me. If it's one week, if it's two weeks, which is Thanksgiving, I get that doesn't work, or it's three weeks, pick one of them, because that's the only way we're going to move any of this process forward. I'm willing to do one week, and I understand that might sacrifice a little bit of the ordinary public process that you might use, but you could also do it more intently. This is not a full policy. It's a, it's a set of amendments. So, please, respectfully, get it done in a week. That way, you don't jeopardize Lavender Court. We come back, we vote these things up and down, they will have been publicly noticed, and we're all the better for it. If you really can't do it within one week, then I'd be willing to say three weeks, because that's the, that's the December 3rd meeting. If that jeopardizes Lavender Court, I suppose Steve is the lead proponent, is willing to live with that risk as well. But that's the choice here, guys, because it's not going to get passed, there aren't five votes to pass it today. I'm trying to be reasonable and not have this be a jam on anybody, but I think it's one week or it's three weeks. And I'd leave that up to Councilmember Hanson. If Councilmember Ashby would agree to one or the other, I would take her suggestion on the one or the three. And then, let's get done with this, okay? Instead of everybody talking again. What's it going to be?
So, Mayor, first of all, the agency acknowledged that they can bring any deviation from the guideline that they want forward. So, they can still bring those projects, whether it's the Metro at 7th or Lavender Courtyard, as a deviation from the guidelines that they put out there.
You're not concerned about the three weeks?
They can do that, no. And we are sitting here as the housing authority and the city council. We, more than the commission or other people, we have the final say on this, and we should be proud of what we do, and we should be happy with these guidelines, because they send a signal to the market.
Would you be willing to do one week if Councilmember Ashby were in agreement?
I think that one week, two weeks, three weeks, it doesn't matter to me. I think we have to get the policy right. And if Councilmember Ashby and I can do what we usually do, which is find a path out, then that's fine with me. But what I know, too, is that this isn't a conversation between us and the commission. It's not a conversation between us and a bunch of stakeholders. This is a conversation about us, for us, to get affordable housing built. And the city's done so much to be a pro-housing city. We have to continue to knock down these barriers. And my call to action is to our agency to see how they can continue to knock down these barriers.
I'm going to interrupt. I'm sorry. Is it one or three weeks? Is your motion?
I don't care.
No, but make, but make the motion. LaShelle says she can't do one, so then your motion is...
Well, there's a substitute that we're voting on first, so if the substitute's withdrawn, I would make no more than three weeks.
Let's call, no more than three weeks is his main motion now. Let's call the roll on the substitute motion right now. Councilmember Ashby's motion to pass the guidelines right now. Go.
So, this is roll call on the substitute motion made by Councilmember Ashby and second by Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren? Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Hanson?
No.
Councilmember Chenier?
No.
Councilmember Guerra?
No.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
No. All right. The substitute motion is to continue the item, considering the amendments, one or three weeks. That's the main motion.
So, my motion, as amended, hopefully seconded by Councilmember Chenier, is that we put this over for three weeks, no more than three weeks.
No more than three weeks.
No more than three weeks, that the agency continue to move the two projects forward that are in the pipeline that were mentioned, and not delay them, but that they collaborate with our housing staff and our Assistant City Manager's office to evaluate the amendments I proposed.
Very good. That's been seconded. Please call the roll.
I can't hear you, Jay.
I want to ask that the city manager actually post it tomorrow for next week, so if the redevelopment agency can get through their process, that we hear it next week.
Either way.
I will take it. We can always push it off.
You can always push it off. Whatever. We won't jam it. We won't jam it. It'll be...
She already told you she can't do this, because the whole thing is jamming her.
Okay. Up to three, up to three weeks. Up to three weeks. Okay? That's the motion.
Yeah. All right.
Okay. Go. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Ashby?
Absolutely not.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Guerra?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
No.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you. Let us move on to the next item. This is the Vision and Guiding Principles for the 2040 General Plan. I want to see if we can move through this relatively quickly. Two minutes, please. No, is this, is this, is this going to be a long item? No, I'm just asking. If it is, I'm, I'm, I would put it over. I would put it over, so we can get to the cannabis issues.
A wave presentation, adopt the items.
And I do have three speakers.
No, Remy, I'm going to have you present for a couple of minutes, because, just so we hear what it is. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. I'm Remy Mendoza with the Community Development Department. As part of the 2040 General Plan update and Climate Action Plan, the Vision and Guiding Principles have been prepared with input from the community, staff, boards and commissions, and our consulting team. The Vision and Guiding Principles summarize what we heard from the community about the critical issues to be addressed as we look to the future and the kind of place for Sacramento to be in 2040. In the next phase of work, we'll be exploring different options and alternatives that can address these issues and help make the vision a reality. Many of the key themes from the 2035 General Plan still do resonate today, but there have been some notable changes. A shift from balanced multimodal transportation system to actively prioritizing transit, walking, and biking over the single occupant vehicle. A shift from an emphasis on sustainability to a more urgent call for climate action and adaptation. New themes as well, equity, investing in youth who will be the leaders in 2040, and promoting a range of new housing for people of all-income demographics and stages of life throughout the city. In terms of next steps, today's staff is recommending that the city council formally adopt the Vision and Guiding Principles. Once adopted by council, we'll begin Phase 2, which involves exploring the different options and alternatives that can address the issues and help make this vision a reality. This concludes my presentation, and we're available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Moved and seconded. We do have three people to testify here. Go ahead.
First speaker is Nova Holly Brookins.
Thank you.
Terry Duarte, and then Rosie Jacob.
Good evening, Mayor, city manager, vice mayor, and city council members. I am here to say that I am in favor, oh, my name is Nova Holly Brookins. I'm here to say that I am in favor of adopting the updated Vision and Guiding Principles. I actually had quite a few other things that I wanted to say, but I know we are ready to go. I second everything that Remy was saying, especially with the emerging big themes for 2040, some of those being the housing, as well as investing in the youth, and equity. Again, I want to thank you for their time, and I approve this message.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Terry Duarte.
Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council, my name is Terry Duarte, and I'm here with the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District. I'm here to let you know today that the district strongly supports the Vision and Guiding Principles as they're currently drafted. The Vision and many of the principles clearly reflect our goals as an air district, including taking bold climate action, reducing pollution, developing a walkable, bikeable city with extensive tree canopy in every neighborhood, and a zero emissions transportation system. And the Vision resonates especially with one of our priorities, which is AB 617, or the Community Air Protection Program, the goal of which is to improve air quality in the disadvantaged communities that so often bear more than their fair share of air pollution. We appreciate the fact that there was a huge amount of community outreach done on the Vision and Guiding Principles, and so, they reflect the work of many people, including our staff. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And the final speaker on this item is Rosie, and it's Jacob.
Hi. I just wanted to register that while I looked at the Vision particularly on climate change and was really excited to see how the city was rolling their cap into their general plan and making it a priority to get to carbon neutrality by 2045, however, I wouldn't necessarily call that bold in the face of some of the information that we've been getting in the last six months, including the climate emergency declared by 11,000 scientists. We need to recognize in all of our documents, including our visioning statement, that there should be a bifold set of goals, one being at 2045, mid-century, the way, as the UN has recommended, but also another one, to have halved emissions by 2030, which is also recommended by the UN. The hardest push needs to be upfront, and, and that needs to be part of the visioning. Thanks.
Thank you. So, as we're rushing through this item here, you know, after intense debate, are we missing anything here in terms of the significance of this item? Because I don't want to give it such short shrift that we're, we're missing something. Are we talking about the 2040 General Plan update's kind of a big deal in terms of the future growth of the city? What... Is there anything we're missing here that we should spend five hours talking about instead of 10 minutes?
Mayor, councilmembers, we've had a lot of deliberation and dialogue with the community in briefings with the council members, amongst our staff, through our technical advisory committee, and both the Vision Statement and the Guiding Principles has been vetted and updated with a significant amount of input. So I don't think there's anything that really hasn't been discussed. There is a bold Vision Statement to be a national model by 2040 in equitable and sustainable growth, as well as 43 guiding principles that will help guide the development of 10 elements of the General Plan and a bold Climate Action Plan.
Okay. Very good. Councilman Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. So, guys, I think you did a really good job. I appreciate the briefing and all the outreach you've done. I do think we're missing one thing, and I would ask the makers of the motion to take this. If you go to page 15 of 29, where you talk about a safe, equitable, inclusive, and just city, the only mention that we really have of youth here is kind of in the context of law enforcement, which is not exactly the way that I think we should go. We've done a lot of work on this council in adopting the Youth Development Campaign, in reorganizing the Department of Parks, in doing Thousand Strong, in doing the Free Ride on RT. And so what I would like to see is... And I don't have exact language for you, but I would like to see one of these bullets be around supporting young people's success in school, career, and life, because I think as part of the general plan, as part of what we do and thinking about how we make decisions, I'd like it to be in there. So whether or not we can do that as an amendment, I got that, and I'm happy to work with you on language.
Good. I think that maker of the motion will add that, and the seconder will as well. Okay? Thank you for always reminding us about the future generation. Appreciate it, Jay. Vice Mayor Geta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. One, I'd like to support that recommendation. I think we've invested a lot of time on redefining how our city government focuses on youth and what efforts it takes, so I think it's important to be part of the vision document. I wanted to point out three particular things in here that are new. And one is the look at economic development as we look also at our issues of usage of water, waste, and air pollution, to look at how do we make sure that we become the incubator for places of innovation? And I think spelling that out as we do, and item number nine is an important one. And I think we'll find that the benefits of creating innovation centers like Aggie Square and also the Future Mobility Center to tackle our air pollutant and air quality issues are important. Also, I want to point out item number 26. I want to thank the staff for working on this in identifying challenges to workforce development and workforce participation. Obviously, we've talked about transportation. We've talked about affordability, the issues of being efficient. But one thing that was included in here is the challenge of childcare and the rising cost of childcare. On average, it's about $1,500 to have childcare if you want to work in the central city. So anybody who is coming out in the central city and trying to take advantage of childcare, you almost need two jobs just for the issue of childcare. So I think addressing the issue of workforce participation and including the issue of childcare has been an important one of that factor. The last one that, you know, again, we had another fatality of a vehicle pedestrian issue on Fulton Boulevard this last week. And the fact that we're putting in here traffic safety, I think it's item number 42, the safety of human life, and thinking about our connectivity and our transportation and our funding and how we map our streets out as an issue of safety of human life is one that I think is important. I want to thank the staff for recognizing that, because we can't continue to think about what is the future decades of planning without understanding that we have fatalities happening, more and more of vehicle pedestrian, vehicle cyclist. With that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I support the changes recommended.
Thank you. Last but not least, Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Greg and Remy, how flexible is this document? For instance, the last public speaker brought up the urgency of climate change, and in fact, even the IPCC would indicate that climate change is accelerating. And this goal, while noble, actually may not be stringent enough. So, you know, this advice brought out by the 11,000 climate scientists, I think, is something to be noted. And what I'm asking you basically is, if we wanted to make a change to these guidelines in building the plan and incorporate a little bit more urgency in terms of our adaptability to climate change, what would be the way to do that, or can we do that? Does it have to be language now? I mean, I would actually need some time to look a little bit more at IPCC documents as well as the recommendations of this panel of climate scientists.
It is flexible. At the end of the day, the council will be adopting the General Plan, its policies and goals. So really, this is just as we formulate our policies, we develop them, these are essentially the guiding principles behind what we're doing, what we're creating. However, if new things come to light, we certainly can work them into the document.
Well, I think that, you know, since it's really an existential issue, that this is something that we have to be very mindful of. So I will probably come back to you with perhaps some recommendations regarding this once we've done a little bit more investigation into what's being offered by the climate scientists.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We do have a motion and a second on the Vision Statement for the General Plan for 2040. I look forward to 2040, by the way. It's going to be good. All in favor...
We'll be on our last item.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. We don't leave the roll open here, do we?
No, we don't.
The Councilmember Ashby, are you an aye on that?
Yeah.
Okay. She's a aye. So that's...
Eight-zero.
That's good. Okay. So without objection, I'm going to continue item 18, which is the Audit Report on Medical Marijuana. So we shorten a little bit. We have two items left then. One is the moratorium issue, item 17, on marijuana, and the last one is the Children's Fund Date of Election. So before we turn it over to...
No, no.
Ms. Milstein, I just want to make a couple of opening remarks on this item here. So two years into the legalization of recreational cannabis in California, I think it's important to take a hard look now around how we are regulating this new industry. It's particularly true in light of the consolidation of permit ownership here in Sacramento, a development clearly not intended by the City Council at the time the rules were adopted. We need to be very confident that we know who is selling cannabis in our city and that they are operating within our rules. We also need to make sure our rules are sufficient to produce a fair and transparent playing field. And so last month, I called for a temporary moratorium on ownership transfers, and that's the item we're going to hear today. We have our independent city auditor, Jorge Osagüeta, taking a deep look into our dispensary permitting rules, and will report back to us on November the 12th. And maybe we can do the medical...
November 12th?
Excuse me. Did I say November 12th? Excuse me.
That's today.
Never mind. That was today. We're pushing that one off. But I just want to add, we're not going to hear it today. But I have also asked that the staff bring back, and as soon as possible... You don't have to worry about November 12th, but someday beyond. That the city establish an independent compliance officer to oversee not only dispensary permitting and compliance with city regulations, but also other branches of the industry as well. Now, there are reasonable questions about how best to do this, but I think it ought to be out of the city auditor's office. Office, it ought to be separate from whoever the manager hires to lead the division. And it's something that, once that person comes on board, we ought to discuss and bring forward forthwith so we have that independent compliance. And finally, I want to bring back, as soon as possible, and I see some of the leaders of the core movement in the audience, an ordinance change that lists the cap on dispensaries from 30 to 35 within the next couple of months, and requires that the five new permits go to participants in the city's core program. We put out a lot of money, which is the right thing to do, around technical assistance and how to help core businesses get started. Now we need to match that assistance with actually getting the permits to the core businesses so that they can be part of this new industry here in Sacramento. Today, we're just dealing with the moratorium question. I turn it over to Ms. Milstein. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Lainey Milstein, Assistant City Manager and current Acting Manager of the Cannabis Division. The item before you for consideration is a proposed emergency ordinance making changes to the city's regulatory structure specific to the ownership of cannabis storefront dispensaries to address the consolidation of ownership of storefront dispensaries in the city. The development of the regulatory structure for cannabis businesses has been an evolving process that reflects the changing legal and enforcement landscape at the state and federal and local levels over the past 10 years. In July of 2009, to stop the proliferation of unregulated medical dispensaries, council adopted ordinance 20933, which allowed medical dispensaries that met certain requirements to operate within the city. Dispensaries that did not meet these requirements were ordered to cease operations. In November 2011, council adopted ordinance 201149, requiring each dispensary to register its location pursuant to the prior ordinance and complete two phases of an application process in order to qualify for an operating permit. In November 2012, council suspended the processing of permit applications in response to the changing legal landscape at that time. Council reauthorized processing in October of 2013. Starting with more than 50 registered dispensaries throughout Sacramento, at the conclusion of Phase Two applications in 2015, only 30 dispensaries had completed the process and received a permit. Because no new dispensaries would qualify for a permit unless they had previously registered and completed the two phases of the application, a de facto cap of 30 dispensaries was created. In November 2017, council adopted a third ordinance, 201760, removing all references to registered applicants in the two phases of applications, and a cap of 30 permits was officially established in Section 5.150.350 of the City Code. While Chapter 5.150 also prohibits storefront dispensary permits from being sold, transferred, assigned, or bequeathed, the city's current regulatory structure does not include a prohibition on multiple ownerships. It is important to note that prior to January 9, 2019, cannabis dispensaries were allowed under SB 420 to operate as nonprofit collectives or cooperatives. As such, permits were issued to the collective, and individuals elected by its membership to hold office were named as permit holders. Because the permit belonged to the collective and not individual officers, changes in officers, management, and board were not a transfer of a permit as long as the city was able to establish continuity in membership, as was documented in the city auditor's 2017 audit of the city's medical marijuana dispensaries. While the auditor's report revealed some shortcomings in the documentation, the process has since been updated, and the completion of all required documentation is necessary prior to consideration of any changes. As the state's requirement to operate as collectives was phased out earlier this year, some dispensaries restructured and began operating as corporations or a variety of other business entities. Changes to these entities have been reviewed using the same standard of continuity as their predecessor collectives. Given the changing legal framework and market framework in the cannabis industry, we have always recognized that the development of the city's regulatory structure would be an iterative and evolving process. To address the consolidation of ownership of storefront dispensaries in the city, staff is recommending adoption of two specific changes to our Title V Cannabis Ordinance. The first will temporarily suspend ownership changes by prohibiting the transfer of ownership interest of a storefront cannabis dispensary. This provision is proposed to sunset in 120 days, which will provide the time to determine alternatives to our current rules to ensure our regulatory structure reflects changes in state regulations relative to ownership, as well as council's intent relative to a diversity in ownership of dispensary businesses. In addition, the proposed ordinance changes will permanently prohibit one individual from obtaining an ownership interest in more than one storefront cannabis dispensary prospectively by adding Section 5.150.355 to the City Code, reading, "No person who has an ownership interest in a storefront cannabis dispensary may obtain an ownership interest in another storefront cannabis dispensary." The addition of this language will effectively prohibit any person from having an ownership interest in more than one storefront dispensary in the city, preventing further consolidation of ownership within our market. Staff will continue to evaluate alternate regulatory structures that reflect the realities of changing markets and business structures in the context of the current cap on storefront dispensaries. In addition, at the request of Councilmember Carr, in November 2018, council considered options relative to the current cap on dispensaries. That item went to the Law and Legislation Committee, which asked staff to wait for a year, and staff has plans to bring that back early next year.
We're going to bring it back to the council earlier than...
Got it.
Okay. Let's go. We're going to lift the cap.
I want to thank our current staff in the Cannabis Division and our partners in the code enforcement and building divisions of the Community Development Department, the Fire and Police Departments, and the City Attorney's Office. Although not in the same department, we work together as a multidisciplinary team that is reliant on one another and will continue to do so as we move through this next iteration of time and design of our cannabis regulatory system. I also look forward to collaborating further with the Office of the City Auditor to develop a pathway for robust audit and compliance of this ever-changing industry. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Okay. Thank you so much. Let's hear from members of the public, and then we'll turn it over to the City Council.
I have two speakers on this item, Malachi Amen and Brenda Davis.
Good evening, Malachi.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Malachi Amen of the California Urban Partnership, as well as the Network for Racial and Health Equity in Marijuana Policy. You know, first of all, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for your leadership, as well as Councilmember Chenier and other councilmembers, for helping to push equity forward in the city. I think this particular move, in light of recent revelations, is a great direction to go. But there are some things I'd like to point out that, you know, kind of still leaves us disconnected from those who went to jail, thrown into generational poverty, and, you know, even murdered by the police, or killed by the police, I should say, for nonviolent marijuana offenses. On item number one, where we talk about the sunset date, I think of March 4, 2020, I think a key question is, you know, what do we want to happen before this sunset? There are some stakeholder engagement pieces that we never got around to in terms of looking at solutions when the core policy was passed, and now we have this, which kind of exacerbates or expands on the need to do that. What should happen as a condition of selling a dispensary? The principles and intent of CORE should at least apply on the back end of a sale. In other words, supplier contracting opportunities for CORE participants should be a part of this, et cetera, et cetera. What about the current concentration of cannabis dispensary owners? We're talking about what goes forward in the future, but we're not talking about...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Malachi. Thank you so much.
We got a lot of work to do.
I know we do.
Yeah.
Next speaker is Brenda Davis.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Brenda Davis. And I just want to express support for what you're trying to do to deal with the recent over-concentration issue with respect to owners. I have one question about Section 2 of the ordinance, where it somewhat parallels the language in Section 5.150.055, I mean, 050, but not quite, because it doesn't have the phrase "and shall automatically revoke the permit." So I had a question about that, and hopefully we'll have a robust discussion about that, just to get some clarity on if there is a difference between what is currently provided in Section 150.050 and what's being proposed. And with that, thank you very much, Mayor Steinberg, and councilmembers, for your support of the CORE to this date, and we look forward to additional support as we're moving forward.
Thank you so much, Brenda. Appreciate it. All right. Let's hear from our colleagues, Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, when we started this, going down the cannabis road, all of us knew that we were breaking new ground, that this field had not been plowed before, and things would come up that we weren't anticipating, that we weren't prepared for. And that has all proven to be true. So I think it's all fitting and proper that we stop at this point and take a look at what we're doing. Hold all ownership transfers until we can get a regulatory system in place to make sure that... that one group is not getting control of the entire marijuana operation in our city. I've been saddened by the fact that those who were most impacted by cannabis being illegal have not benefited as we have moved along. But there's a bright horizon here. I think there's a consensus that we will identify licenses for dispensaries, and that they will go to those who have been most impacted. It's always dangerous when you have a monopoly. There's all kinds of shenanigans that can go on, game-playing that businesses know how to do. But when you have the competition in place, the businesses will help you regulate the other businesses who are breaking the law or who are skirting the rules. So it's our hope that by increasing the number of dispensaries, by opening them up to more than just the original group who applied several years ago, that we can have a more mature cannabis market in the city. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move the item.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Warren, thank you. Councilmember Carr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilman Carr, thank you for your leadership on this issue. I know you have been constantly outspoken about some of the challenges as they related to the original ordinance, and, you know, I felt very similarly. I want to thank the mayor again, this second time tonight, Mayor.
Keep it coming.
I'm thanking you again, because you moved the needle. You don't like to wait. When you see and you want to take action, you took action tonight, and we're going to lift the cap, and we're going to allow members of the CORE program an opportunity to participate. And so I want to thank you for your leadership. And also, I do want to express my concern, though, for some of the past practices that have happened, and I think most of us know now that there are a number of owners and previous owners that have sold or transferred licenses to folks. And I guess the question I have is really, what do we consider about looking backwards to see, you know, how that stuff has really impacted our city, you know, and what do we do? And so, and I'm not suggesting that anything was illegal, but it definitely seems to fly in the face of the intent of what we were trying to do here in the city. And so, you know, maybe some of my colleagues have suggestions, you know, those that were, you know, advocates for the ordinance, you know? But I am concerned that still, there's something to be learned about what happened previously, and maybe there's some corrections that need to be made. And so I would like to take a little deeper look at it and see if there's further action that needs to take place. I think this moratorium is good, but I think we want to get it right in our city, and I think, you know, it's our responsibility as elected officials to make sure that the policies that we have in place and the outcomes align themselves together and really help to strengthen our city. And so with that, I'm pleased with tonight. I'm pleased with your leadership. I know you're going to do the right thing, Mr. Mayor.
Together.
And we're going to work together on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. I too have been a vocal opponent of pretty much every marijuana ordinance that has come through, and I won't belabor the point, because Councilmember Carr and Councilmember Warren have both done a good job of explaining the consternation that the three of us, or at various times, four or five of us, have had over these issues. And the current problematic things that are playing out now sort of feed that fear for me. And so I am more than happy to support the motion to take a break here and figure out if we're going in the right direction. I don't know if 120 days is enough. Malakai, I told you this before, yeah, I don't think 120 days is enough either, but I'd like to make sure if it's not, that somebody comes back and just tells us they need more time to achieve the goals that we need to achieve. 120 sounds really fast to me, too. But, Malakai, I told you this before, from the very first day that you brought CORE forward, I told you I thought it was a really good idea, but I didn't see anything about these policies that had been put in place that would make it happen. Tonight's the first time, when the mayor talked about his suggestion, which is not what we're voting on tonight, that there might potentially be an opportunity that prioritizes CORE. You know me, I don't even know if I'll be able to support it, because I don't like to raise the cap. However, this is the first time I've heard a proposal ever linked to any of this that actually determined a pathway for the CORE program to be in any way successful, right? And that, to me, at least gets to some of the values of why, of things that Councilmember Jennings and Carr and Warren and previous mayor talked about a lot for our community. So I like that idea that the mayor's bringing forward that we can talk about later, although I'll have to struggle internally with how I feel about adding more to the mix for myself. I don't know if I can get there, but I like that as a council body, we're headed in that direction. And then I just, again, I will support this motion tonight, but I want to be really clear that if in 120 days, this isn't ready, City Manager, then take the time that you need, because I don't want to continue to make the same mistakes we've been making, and I, like my colleagues, don't like reading about it in the paper. I want to know where our shortcomings are. I want us to have an opportunity to weigh in and fix things that are broken, so.
Good. Thank you so much. Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you. Couple things, I think. One, and I guess this is a question for the City Attorney, as we look at this, and I would ask, we also look at Oakland and their equity program and some of the challenges that they had when they wanted to do a set aside for certain groups, and it didn't end well for a lot of folks, that we take a look at that. And I don't know if that would require separate ordinances for these five permits, if we want to raise the cap, and the first 30 that we have. I mean, we want to tighten up on the 30, I understand, on how things are passed from one to another, or sold, or whatever, with the continuity piece in there. But there's a different set of challenges, again, that Oakland has experienced, where folks would come in and then sell their ownership, and it didn't achieve the goal that they had set out for themselves in their equity program. So I just want to make sure that we look at that along the way. Two other things that I'd ask, and this is kind of a combination of the City Auditor and the City Manager, that we take a look at as we are doing this stop and kind of analysis of the program that we have. One is where we are, both at the state level and locally, about banking and credit unions and cash. I know that we have large, large amounts of cash coming through our doors. The B was so kind to do an article about that recently, and so that's a danger that we have here. I think it's a danger to our employees. And I know that there are some changes that we're taking a look at, but I also know that in some areas of the state, credit unions have started working with cannabis dispensaries and to take their cash, also to do credit cards, things like that. So if we can look at that, I think that's a real safety issue. The other thing I'd like us to take a look at over time, and again, I don't know if this is probably the analyst part of the Auditor's Office or the City Manager, is the economic impact of the industry on the city. If we're going to make changes, we need to really understand what we have and where we're going. I had asked Laney about our receipts to date. We're more or less on par with last year, which is about $12 million through the Business Operations Tax. We have permit fees coming in, which vary from year to year, and sometimes cover our costs and sometimes don't. We also, I'm guessing, have in the thousands of jobs in the city. I don't know of any other industry that new that has that many jobs, and others that are still wanting to move here and do things. So if we could, I don't know if it's looking at UOP and doing an extension of the economic analysis that they did prior, or doing something new, but I think it's, if we're going to take a stop and look, we should look at the economic impacts on this, on both sides. What does it cost us to run the programs? How much revenue are we making off of it as we think about the tweaks that we need?
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, first, again, I also support this moratorium. It's the reason also why we, in the Law and Legislation Committee and the work with Councilmember Chenier, we put a moratorium also on the number of delivery dispensaries, particularly in the power-in area, because we needed to make sure how this was all working out, how it was playing out. And in the Law and Legislation Committee, we also discussed the issue of lifting the cap, and also asked our staff to come back in a year for that particular reason. I mean, there's a lot going on that our staff, our very limited staff, can keep up with. And I want to make sure that, I acknowledge the work that the City Manager and our city staff have been doing to try to keep up with, no pun intended, a growing business. But...
Well, that was an intended pun.
But expanding business, let me think. But the fact is that, you know, this is a byproduct of the city for the last, I don't know what, since 2009 was the first ordinance, starting this road. Back then, the ordinance allowed for 400 square feet of ability to grow in your own house personal cannabis, which led to a very unfortunate byproduct, a horrible byproduct, that led to a lot of illegal growth throughout the city. And a lot of the things we discussed on enforcement in the Law and Legislation Committee allowed us to be able to crack down on all that illegal grow by setting a number of standards and moving forward with how are we going to manage this market. So, you know, I think this is another reason why we have to take it slow on all of these pieces and make sure that we get the right information. Lastly, I also want to thank not only our city staff, but also the staff over in the Power and Alliance. They're only a small handful of staff, and all of the community members and board members who are involved in reviewing all those applications. They do it at, most of those do it without any pay. They do it for long hours, and to make sure that what's happening in their community is important. There's more to be discussed about the cap. I have concerns about how we approach that issue, because, again, it's, we have a very limited staff, and we have to be able to manage whatever is coming to the work of the city appropriately. And I will say, if we overburden what we can do, we're not going to be able to keep a good program together. So I'll leave my comments on that and support the moratorium. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Let's call the question. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstaining, that passes unanimously. The moratorium is in place, but much more to discuss on this item. Thank you, everyone. We have one more item tonight, and this is the decision about whether to place the Children's Fund Act of 2020 on the March or November ballot. Councilmember Hanson, I know you wanted to say something quick.
Thank you, Mayor. I know there are a lot of people here waiting for this, and I had hoped to hear your testimony. I have a community meeting over an accident that happened with one of our elementary schools, where a little girl was hit in a crosswalk, and it starts at 6:00. We have a lot of parents and families who are expecting me there, and so I apologize, but I'm going to have to leave. I know my colleagues can handle this question admirably, but I apologize to all of you who are waiting. I wanted to hear your testimony, but I also have to assure my constituents.
Mr. Mayor, you're not going to leave, are you?
No, I'm loving it here. I'm staying right here.
Thank you to my mayor.
You have four hours to talk to you.
Well, I'm going to listen, too, so hold on. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Here's how it's going to work. We don't have to have, in my opinion, we don't have to debate this for a long, long time. We want to hear from the members of the public who showed up, most importantly, and then we'll hear from the council members, and we're going to take a vote. All right? Let's begin with the public testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have 10 speakers. The first is Malakai Amen, then Sarah Michael Gaston, then Daryl Roberts.
And remember, the question tonight is not whether you're for it or against it necessarily, but what, where it should be placed, which ballot.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Malakai Amen of the California Urban Partnership. We worked very hard as one of many members of the Sacramento Kids First Coalition to get this measure signed by Sacramento voters. We believe that it is incredibly important that this measure goes on the March ballot because of implementation issues. We think that it's a small thing to ask of this council in terms of leadership because of the children that are involved, because of the equity issues that are involved. These are the kids who are the aftermath of the war on marijuana. They are the kids who are caught up into the school-to-prison pipeline, and so there really is no other valid reason, including, you know, political reasons about other issues on the ballot. There's no other valid reason to hold this off after March, so we respectfully urge this council's vote to put this on the March ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Malakai.
Sarah Michael Gaston, then Daryl Roberts, then Nia Moore Weathers.
Welcome to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Steinberg and council members. I'm Sarah Michael Gaston with Youth Forward and the SAC Kids First Coalition. The SAC Kids First Coalition is our city's largest grassroots coalition, with 28-member organizations and over 1,200 individual supporters. Since Mayor Steinberg wasn't with us last week, I would like to present, again, the petition signed by over 800 people, who are asking you to place this measure on the March ballot. Mayor Steinberg, when you get the chance, when we get you a copy, if you read the comments, you'll be happy to see that one of our supporters thinks you are cool and have a great sense of humor.
Who was that?
Last week, I shared with you the rationale for the March ballot. We presented this timeline that shows that if the measure is on the March ballot and is approved by voters, there'll be enough time to implement this measure well. Tonight, I'd like to share the timeline if the measure is on the November ballot. As you will see in this one-pager, we expect the council would appoint the Planning and Oversight Commission in January. The commission would then only have three months, February, March, and April, to review data on children and youth, to develop a three-year strategic plan, and to create an evaluation framework. Once a plan is developed, the commission will present these documents to you, the City Council. In the scenario, you will only have one month to review the plan, ask the commission for revisions if needed, to receive public comment, and to vote, so the program is ready to launch in June as required by the measure. As you can see, this is a very compressed timeline. It is hard to imagine that a newly-formed commission will be able to develop a strategic plan and an evaluation in only three months, or that the city would be able to hire staff and develop a grant-making system in such a short period of time. Also, in this timeline, you, the City Council, would have little time to review the plan, ask for revisions if needed, and take public comment. If the measure is on the November ballot, there will simply not be adequate time to do a good job of launching the Children's Fund. We believe the children and youth of Sacramento deserve our best, and that we should do our best for them. For these reasons, we ask you to place this measure on the March ballot. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all your hard work.
The next speaker is Daryl Roberts, then Nia Moore Weathers, then DeAngelo Mack.
Mr. Roberts?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, City Manager Daryl Roberts, Roberts County Development Center. Want to take you back a little bit of the spring, early last year, 2018, where more than 150 folks began the process of collecting signatures, bought a copy of the petition to you. And in the petition, it said that 90% of the funds collected for youth and children's services will include programs for mentoring, counseling, culturally-based healing practices, alcohol and drug use prevention and intervention, job training, transitional employment and case management, summer and after-school learning, artistic, cultural, and media expression, career-based internships, and family support services, and early childhood education, parent-child playgroups, and support, family support services. As folks signed the petition, they saw this postcard that said, "Look for the Sacramento Children's Fund Act on your March 2020 election ballot," when the more than 35,000 folks signed the petition, expected to be on a March 2020 ballot. It's our hope tonight that you will support those who are your constituents in your district, District 8, District 5, District 6, Mayor of Citywide, District 3, District 1, and District 2, and support their efforts to put on the ballot, March 2020, the dedicated youth fund. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Nia Moore Weathers? Nia Moore Weathers, then DeAngelo Mack.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name's Nia Moore Weathers. I am the community organizer at Youth Forward, a representative of District 4, and a representative of the Sacramento Kids First Coalition. I'm here to talk to you today about the Oakland Children's Fund and how it relates to Sacramento's implementation process when it's going to come to Sacramento Kids First. So just a few quick facts. The Sacramento Kids First Coalition was able to meet with the executive director of the Oakland Children's Fund. Her name is Sandra Taylor. And we learned that the fund has been implemented since 1996, so 23 years, and in 2008, it was reauthorized because it was successful in supporting more than 146 programs in the Oakland area, as well as serving over 25,000 youth. After meeting with Sandra, two things became apparent to us. One, the funding plan of the Oakland Children's Fund is a three-year plan. It goes from 2019 to 2020. That's going to be this guy right here. And this plan features nine different funding strategies to ensure programming for all youth living in Oakland, ages 0 to 21. Just to lift up a few of these strategies, career awareness, employment support, socio-emotional well-being for preschools, early education. The second important thing that came apparent to us was this evaluative document. It's 93 pages long, and it's something that they complete once a year to ensure that the programs that they are serving are functional and are actually doing what they say that they promised going to do. In saying all this, I don't suggest that we follow the Oakland model to a T. Sacramento is an independent and unique city and has her own problems. What I am suggesting is that we mirror the deliberate and thorough effort that clearly the Oakland Fund has taken to ensure that their fund operates effectively. In keeping with the spirit, I urge you to place Sacramento Kids First on the March 2020 ballot so we can have a smooth, diligent, and thoughtful implementation process. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is DeAngelo Mack. DeAngelo Mack, Anna Tokolo, then Herman Barahana.
Welcome.
Hi. So DeAngelo isn't here. I'm Anna. So we are street team ambassadors of the nonprofit organization, Alliance for Education Solutions, and I'm the program coordinator for the Sacramento Youth Alliance, which brought about the two youth town halls here in Sacramento. The first in 2016 at the Sim Center and the second being in 2017 at the Robertson Center. At both of our youth town halls, we have the support from our wonderful Mayor Steinberg and also Jay Chenier. And then at the second youth town hall, we had Eric Gedda present. We've also worked with Rick Jennings' district by hosting a couple of summer listening sessions last year. At the two youth town halls, we voiced our concerns to the mayor and councilmembers, urging them to hear our cry as our young people and to support the youth. Our tagline for this event, which is still being used today in the youth development plan, is "Nothing About Us Without Us." I mention all of that because we are youth advocates who truly believe in creating systemic change in Sacramento's most marginalized communities, and we also believe in keeping our councilmembers accountable. So our urge of you today is not to stay focused on the disproportionate problem of allocating funds to impoverished communities. Our demand is that you all, as a council, ask yourselves, are you being right or are you being effective in your political leadership? We say a lot in our nonprofit that it's not about the hard work, it's about the...
Hard work!
And we believe that you'll definitely be affected by supporting the Sacramento Kids First measure to be placed on the ballot in the 2020 March election, and you'll definitely be affected by investing in our youth, because although youth and children are only 40% of the population today, we are 100% of the future. And lastly, you will be affected by legitimizing your support for kids and youth by ensuring secured funding and investing in our young people, because you'll give them a chance to not be looked at as products of their environment, but a beacon of hope for future generations. And in conclusion, please don't just vote on the Sacramento Kids First measure to be on the ballot, but act on it as well, because it's "Nothing About Us Without Us." When I say "Nothing About Us," he say "Without Us." Nothing about us.
Without us!
Nothing about us!
Without us!
Thank you!
Thank you. Very well done. Very well done.
The next speaker is Herman Barahana, then Ray Green, then Cesar Castaneda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Herman Barahana. I'm the new community organizer for United Latinos here in Sacramento County. I'm here on behalf of the organization, and I'm also the vice president for the Latino Leadership Council, which is a community service organization in North Sacramento. We are in favor of moving this ballot to the, to March 2020, and there are many reasons for that. You probably heard this over a few times already. But what we want to ask on behalf of United Latinos is that we hear the stories of our kids in our schools, in our parks, that they don't have places to play, they don't have programs. Some parents are complaining about paying $100 an hour to use a soccer field in some of our parks if they need lighting. These are the kinds of things we want to go back to them and say, you know what? This is a great city council, and they're thinking about the future of your children. And so this is why we believe and support Sacramento Kids First Coalition, and we'd love to hear a positive outcome in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The next speaker is Ray Green, Cesar Castaneda, and Charlene Singley is the final speaker.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? Good to see you. So hello, my name is Ray Green. I'm here today representing the center at Sierra Health Foundation in support of the Sacramento Kids First Coalition. I coordinate now the Sacramento My Brothers Keeper program at the center, and I have long worked with amazing youth, as you all have, specifically in North Sacramento, and know the value of their creativity, as well as their love and what that brings to this city. At the center, much of our work is built on the understanding that young people have the talent, the desire, and the experience to lead their own incredible futures. So we are in support of this effort to take seriously youth development, safety, and education. Most importantly, it's important for our young people to know that they are valued, that they are heard, and that their success is also our success. And their futures matter to the city and to the people of their city. Local advocates and leader have worked diligently within and with community members and young people themselves, and the message is clear. Sacramento wants and Sacramento needs sustained investment in all kids. We believe it's important to place the Children's Fund Act on the March ballot because there is no time to waste. So I'll repeat, we believe that it is important that we place the Children's Fund Act on the March ballot because there is no time to waste. The future of our children and our city depend on the real equity, support, and investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Cesar Castaneda, and then Charlene Singley.
Good evening again, Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. I'm Cesar Castaneda from La Familia Counseling Center, and I am here in support with all of these wonderful organizations and urge of you to decide to put this ballot in the March. So simply just to reiterate all of the great things that a lot of these organizations are doing with children, we want to make sure that we can put this in the ballot for March.
Thank you, Cesar. Appreciate it.
Our final speaker is Charlene Singley.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm here today representing St. John's Lutheran Church, not the Realtors, although I do think that this definitely has an effect on the quality and health of all of our neighborhoods. St. John's is strongly in support of the Children's Fund and the Sacramento Kids First Initiative. We hope that you will show your support as well by putting it on the March ballot. As you've heard numerous times tonight, it will allow for a much more efficient implementation of the program when it is passed. You've also heard about the successes in Oakland, and I'd like to remind you of some of the statistics. They serve over 25,000 youth per year. There have been declines in the dropout rates, declines in the juvenile incarceration rates. Children who participate in after-school programs have not only higher attendance rates, but better behavior and better grades than the students who do not participate in these programs. I know you've heard from several youth over the last few meetings testifying as to their own experiences in programs such as those that are suggested in the Children's Fund, and how these programs have successfully impacted and changed the path of their lives. We believe that this fits in with the, as we just saw, the updated vision and guiding principles as it relates to equity and investing in youth, as well as your plans for investing in the economic development and health of our underserved neighborhoods. Investing in our youth today will have a major impact on not only their lives, but all of ours as well. So St. John's respectfully requests that you place the Children's Fund on the March 2020 ballot, and I thank you.
Thank you, Charlene. Appreciate it. All right. That concludes our public testimony. Let's turn it over briefly to the members of the city council. Councilman Chenier.
Briefly being the operative word. So first of all, Ray, I believe personal congratulations in order, so congratulations. Best of luck. They have a child coming.
Congratulations, Ray.
So I will be, I will be brief on this, and I want to reiterate a point that the mayor made and that's been made. This is not, this discussion is not about the content of the initiative. This is about procedure and what works best. And so it's kind of a, what's the best policy for the city? What's the best way that we can operate to ensure that anything we do and everything we do is effective and efficient moving forward? I want to move the staff recommendation on accepting their certificate, and then also move that we put the ballot measure on in March. The reason I want to do this is really twofold. One is 51,000 signatures. These folks did a lot of work, and they deserve the respect that is due for that amount of work that they have done. There were a lot of volunteers. I think Daryl Roberts asked me personally at least 15 times to sign the thing, so you can't get away from him. But I want to respect that, first of all. Second, I think procedurally, if this does pass, and I think there's a very good chance that it will, if it does pass, I think the city should have adequate, needs adequate time to really set up the infrastructure to do this right. That point's been made over and over again. I agree with it completely. So kind of as a process question, doing the right thing for the city, I think, is putting this on in March, and that's because that's what the proponents want. I would say the final thing and what probably swayed me the most was listening to all of the young people last week. That's exactly what we want, and whether you engage, whether you agree with them or not on content, having that many young folks be so articulate about what they need, that's the city that we want, that's the future that we want. I know that's what this initiative is about. So with that, accept the certificate, move the item for March.
Moved, and it's been seconded by councilmember, Vice Mayor Gedda, Councilman Harris. I'm sorry, I'm tired. Go ahead.
I like that, Mayor. It's got a good ring to it. Well, you know, I appreciate all the effort that's been put forward to collect the signatures for the Children's Fund, but I have a different take on this. This represents a very substantial change to our city charter, and I believe that when we do things as radical as change our charter, that we have to do outreach to the most constituents that we possibly can. I actually think that the proponents of the measure could be more successful if they had more time to mount a campaign, but that can be argued either way. You know, I hear the arguments about implementation. I think that that could be achieved if it was on the November ballot, but I think in terms of pure process, when you make a change to the city charter, it should be brought forward to the general election rather than the primary. We know that in primary elections, there's much lower turnout. This is a big issue for the city to consider, and I think it deserves, it has the merit and deserves that all voters be made aware of what this actually means for the children, certainly, but also for the city charter, and in terms of how we manage our budget in the city. This is a rather bold move, and I think that it should be put on the ballot in November. So I would offer a substitute motion that we place it on the November ballot.
We haven't set the election yet, so this is up or down on March at this point, I think. Is that correct? We can't put it on an election we haven't set.
We could not, but you could direct me to bring it back in the summertime to call the election.
Well, that would be the direction then.
So that's your...
And actually, it was a direction item.
Okay, that's a substitute motion to direct the clerk to bring it back, to place it on the November ballot. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second?
I need to speak.
Okay, then we'll let the motion hang out there for a moment. Vice Mayor Gedda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, first, I don't disagree with the comments that my colleague, Councilmember Arice, just mentioned. I do agree that there's bigger participation, and from a political strategy standpoint, if I was probably organizing, you know, how to make it effective, that would make more sense. But why I seconded the motion to put it on the March ballot, and will support that motion, was the compelling nature of all of the youth that showed up last week while I was chairing the meeting, and their ability to articulate the need of being able to get the process moving forward quickly so that it's part of our budget process, our Measure U process, and understanding all the complexities of what, how our financing has evolved over the last year tells me that they also probably understand the consequences of going on a March ballot. And so, you know, it's almost, you know, be careful what you wish for, but to me, I felt that they laid a very thoughtful plan about why it's essential for them to have it on that March ballot. So I recognize that concern, and with that, glad to support all the youth. I know a lot of them in District 6 were out there walking and knocking and talking, and I found that real exciting. And I also want to recognize a neighbor out there, Jim Ketti, you know, for always continuing to get, you know, youth involved. You know, yes, he deserves a big round of applause. Both Jim Ketti and Fernando Subirion, when I, right out of college, were the ones who got me engaged when I wasn't very politically engaged, and they continue to do it. So thank you for keeping that work alive.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the mayor framed it correctly. We're deciding whether or not to put this on the ballot in March or November. That's the only question. The substance of the initiative really doesn't play a part in it at this point, in my mind. It's very difficult to get a petition through. It is very difficult for those who've never done it. It's weeks and weeks and weeks, standing in front of supermarkets with ironing boards, getting people to sign, people are signing petitions who live in Elk Grove, people in Yolo County sign the petitions. So you got to get a lot of petitions in order just to get enough to qualify for the ballot. So I think this deserves to be on the ballot in March, because this is the way our system works. You elect representatives, they vote the way they think is right. When people think that we're coming up short or something else needs to be done that we can't agree with, too, then people have the right to get petitions, to petition their government, and for us to put it on the ballot in a reasonable time. And since the whole implementation was based on March, we would be sort of negating the will of the people who signed those petitions to put it off until November. And I'm sensitive to what Councilmember Harris said and also what Councilmember McGarrett said. People who vote in March are a different subset of people who vote in November, and people who vote in March are generally kind of more conservative people, and so it's going to be a tough challenge. And I'm not saying that I agree with this, by the way, that I agree with the issue. I still have to give it some more thought, because it does change the way we do business. But in terms of when should it appear on the ballot, let's put it on in March.
Councilman? Councilmember Ashby?
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak before seconding Jeff's motion. Let me first say that, I know it's been said, but it's really important that the vote today isn't about the substance of the language, because I have pretty grave concerns about it, but that's for another day. The only question here is, you did your job, you got your votes, you brought it in front of us. Do we put it in March or do we put it in November, like my colleague, Councilmember Harris and Councilmember Hanson has said in the past, too? This is really a content-neutral argument. I just think when you're going to make a change to the charter, it ought to happen in November, because that's when the most voters come out, and so the most people get to weigh in. So I'm going to second Councilmember Harris's motion. That being said, I would probably support, if the substitute motion fails, I'll support the March ballot as well, because you'd need a time machine to go back and talk to the organizers and say, hey, you really should have focused on November, because this is a charter change, and at any rate, I think, you know, that ship has sailed. But I want to give him his second because... has sailed, but I want to give him his second because I think it's important to keep that dialogue going in the future. If somebody else brings something forward where they want to change the charter, hopefully they will focus a timeline on a November ballot that allows the bulk of people in the city to weigh in on whatever that item is. So from a good governance standpoint, I think charter changes should be on in November. From a hard work of the folks who went out and worked on this, we didn't tell them that in advance, so it's, I don't think fair to change the rules now, but we should probably consider something moving forward.
Okay.
So second to the substitute.
Second to the substitute. Mr. Warren, Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support the hard work of the young people and the leaders, Darryl and Hernan and the other folks that work with these young people and helping them understand how important democracy is, how important it is to be involved in the process. And, you know, if this passes in March, they would have earned it. I mean, they did a lot of work, you know, and so I do also believe, like, like Councilman Carr. Is that his name? Carr?
Yeah, that's his name.
But the voters that come out in March will tend to be more conservative, so your work is not done. The work is not done just because this will go on the March ballot. And so, but I think you've earned it, and I'm going to support it. And I want to say to Councilmen McGarra and Shanier, thank you, Mayor, and hopefully, you know, this will turn out the right way.
Last word, fair arguments on all side. Very briefly, I think practically, March will, if it passes, and this isn't my weighing in on the merits of this either, if it passes, it'll give us time then to consider the passage in light for the 2020-21 budget. That's number one. Number two, I think we ought to respect the wishes of the proponents here. So I'm for March. Here we go. Substitute motion, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
No.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Shanier.
No.
Councilmember McGarra.
No.
Councilmember Carr.
No.
Mayor Steinberg.
No. All right. That motion does not pass. The main motion to put this on the, certify and put it on the March ballot. Please.
Councilmember Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yeah.
Councilmember Harris.
Yeah.
Councilmember Shanier.
Yes.
Councilmember McGarra.
Yeah.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. Very good. Thank you all for coming out. Thank you for being active, active leaders in your community. Makes a difference. Okay. We've got items on agenda. We have three speakers. I know gentlemen's waited a long time. I'm going to stay, then I have to go.
Any council comments?
I'm going to, hold on. If we can ask you guys to please exit relatively quietly, I'd appreciate it. What's that? Listen to the public comment here. I want to do a quick adjournment memory as soon as we do the public comment, and then I have to leave by 6:30. So go ahead.
Reason why I'm here, sir.
Two minutes.
Mr. Mayor.
One moment, sir.
Hold on.
I have three speakers for matters not on the agenda. The first is David Wheat, then Bridget Duffy, then Regina Brink.
Wheat.
I can't hear very good. Okay, Wheat.
You have two minutes.
Ms. Ashby, do you still have my CD I gave you, Bob Seeger? No Man's Land. I'm in No Man's Land again. Okay. Jay, took me nine years to get that gate in my alley, man, and you know how much money we've saved the city, the SAC PD, from the prostitution, the drugs, the dumping and all that. We don't have that no more now. All we have is people going to the bathroom in the alley. Okay, I'm here today, Mr. Mayor, because I suffer from mental illness. And I've been, SAC PD did me wrong. I called 911. I was involved in an accident at Talik Village on Sunday, Sunday the 15th, 10:40 a.m. I haven't been in an accident or had a ticket in 40 years. I get out, I ask the guy what happened. He says I was speeding. I wasn't. So I went and asked all these people if there was a witness. There wasn't. He was laughing, he was joking. He said, oh, it's nothing. His car didn't get hurt. He was in a nice Affinity SUV. I got a 2,000 SRV Honda, and it had no dents before. Now it does. Okay? The people on 911 said, hey, they said, if no one got hurt or if you guys are being civil, we don't need to come. Well, the guy's not being civil, blaming it on me and laughing. He didn't want to give me no information, nothing until after the 911 call. So the 911 call came. She goes, put me on speakerphone. I don't, I've never owned a cell phone or a computer in my life. I've got 20 years in the California Department of Corrections because of my mental illness. Okay? Now something really bad. If I'd had a gun, they would have came.
No.
You know what I'm saying? No, but I mean, I don't want to die in prison. I want to live. I want to die on the streets. But when I can't get no help and no one listens, when people don't listen, that's when stuff happens.
Okay.
Okay?
Your time is up, but hold on.
Okay, my, I got four seconds.
I'm going to suggest something. Your time's up. We have Chris Conlin here, who's the Assistant City Manager overseeing the Police Department, is going to meet with you right now to try to-
I want to say one last thing. What the detective told me the last time I talked to him. Nope, I've got to hear this. He said, Mr. Wheat, what do you want me to do? I said, I want you to get the video. The video was right there. It would have solved everything.
Okay.
You know what he said, though? He said, we're not here to run errands for the public.
Well, we're going to have Mr. Conlin look into this. We also-
If you believe in mental illness, then you need to start by helping me.
We'll try to help you, sir. There's also maybe one from my-
This is all the times I've been in the hospital the last five years.
This may also be one from my staff, Mr. Conlin.
Jay, you know me. You know I'm not crazy, but I do suffer from mental illness.
Mr. Gardner, our new, our new opposite director, we may move for- Okay, next.
Our next speaker is Bridget Duffy.
All of you go see that movie, The Joker, and you'll see what the mental illness is about.
Thank you.
Is Bridget Duffy here?
No.
No?
Next, last but not least. Come on.
Hi.
Hi. I haven't been here in a while. Oh, you know I'm short. We need this to come back.
We'll get the mics down there. There you go. Okay.
Okay. I am here to address a couple of issues. The first I did bring privately to three of the council members, but I'm going to put it on the public record now because there's been some delay in addressing it. And it's, I was applying for a process, a position with the Sacramento Metropolitan Arts Council, and the application process is done online, and it's a print process, and I am really okay at computers. I've worked at them for a long time. But I use a screen reader, and this particular submitables platform does not work with screen readers. It's a third-party platform, so the city doesn't, you know, control it. The people, you use it to submit applications. And so it effectively would have screened me out, except that someone from the Short Center Repertory where I work, they sent one of their assistants over, office assistants, to help me post it. I had to turn off my screen reader. I did all the writing myself, but I had to have someone post it for me, so put everything up. If I didn't have that kind of assistance, I would have been out of the process, and there was no provision when I called the office until the day after they called me after the deadline.
Our city clerk might be able to respond right now because I think we have an answer to the-
Ms. Brink, we actually just purchased new software, but I will look into that to make sure that it is compliant, and I may reach out to you to make sure that it's going to work for you.
Is it okay if our city clerk reaches out to you directly tomorrow?
Yeah, that would be good. I, I used to work with the Society for the Blind, and we had volunteers that are willing to review the pages to make sure they're accessible.
Okay.
Because sometimes you need more than one person if there's a lot of pages.
Thank you.
The second issue is-
No, we got, you got 10 seconds. We got a-
The second issue is city water bills. They don't give you time to pay, and if you're on a fixed income, there's a problem. I've had a specific problem. I can go into later with someone else.
Okay, can we make sure, Mr. City Manager, that, on the way out, that we have our team talk with our, with our resident here?
I have no more speakers.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming again. We appreciate it. So I've got to leave here, and I'll turn it over to Vice Mayor McGarra for any council comments, but I just wanted to end my portion of this tonight and ask that we adjourn in the memory of Bernard Tyson, the CEO of Kaiser, who died suddenly on Sunday morning. This is a tremendous loss to California and to Sacramento because Kaiser, through his leadership and the friendship we've actually formed over the last 90 days, really, really has, has done a lot and will continue to do a lot to help us with all of our great causes, including alleviating the condition of homelessness. Bernard was a nationally respected healthcare leader, but he was also a very down-to-earth guy, who was easy to talk to, and I was just getting to know him and his greatness, and he died. And I know people throughout the entire healthcare world in the country are mourning his loss at age 60. What's that? And at San Francisco, grew up, San Francisco, Golden Gate University started work at Kaiser as an intern and has worked, worked his way up to be the CEO, his wife Denise, his three children are sympathies, and I want to make sure we adjourn in his memory tonight. Okay? Thank you. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Gedda. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. If there's no more council comments, I wanted to first just say that today is my son's birthday, and he's two years old.
Aye.
And he probably, he obviously can't understand anything now, but if he ever looked on the video archives on November 12th of 2019, he would hear his dad say, "Feliz cumpleaños, mijo. Te quiero mucho, y este, nos vemos pronto." We're all adjourned. Say again? I'm sure he would have wanted it on March if he was watching this. So, well, thank you, everyone. We're adjourned at 6:27 PM.